Members of council, if I can please have you take your seats. I will call this meeting to order. Would you please stand for the National Anthem? O Canada, our home and native land. To pay to love in all thy songs and moods. Grab your glass and pour your beer. And let's enjoy the night. Don't be shy and chew your apple pie. Take a look at this one. God keep our land, glorious and free. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Please remain standing for a moment of silence and during this time, remember the victims of the attack in Manchester, England. Thank you. We acknowledge that we are meeting today on the traditional territory of the Mississaugas of the new credit First Nation, the Haudenosaunee, the Huron, Wendat, and home to many diverse indigenous peoples. For the benefit of those who are connected to the Internet, the city clerk has posted all of the agenda materials for today's meeting at toronto.ca/council. councillor Mattlow, I understand you wish to make a brief announcement at this time?
Madam Speaker, I'd appreciate it if I could make this announcement at a slightly later point in the meeting. I'm just waiting for some information to share.
If you can just advise me?
I will, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I will now call for a motion to confirm the minutes. councillor Shan, you have a motion on the minutes from the last meeting.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that City Council confirm the minutes of the council from the meeting held on April 26th, 27th, and 28th of 2017 in the form applied to the members. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor, Carrie, councillor McConnell? Oh, you want to record it? Record it.
councillor Mattlow, please? The motion to confirm the minutes carries unanimously 30 in favor.
Thank you. councillor McConnell?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I apologize for not speaking to you earlier, but I wanted to bring to the attention of council, and I know the mayor is aware of this, that we've had incredible work by our city staff on the islands, and we are in grave danger of erosion on the islands. The families on the islands and the people on the islands are doing pretty good. There's huge work that has gone 24 hours at times to save those homes, both by the islanders and by our remarkable staff. But in addition to that, I wanted to point out to the members that that's not really the main destruction that is going on. The main destruction is the erosion of the islands themselves, and we've had several places where they have been pierced and where the lake has come in to the lagoons. So there's going to be a huge amount of reclamation work. I really appreciate it. I think the mayor's been there two or three times. I've been there several times, and just we're keeping a watching brief on it. But we wouldn't be able to do that without both the local staff that have worked and the staff that have come in from all of our staff. So if I could, I hope that the city manager conveys the thanks of city council to our great staff for the work that they have done, and I hope that over the next little while, we begin to look at what we have to do to put that jewel back together, and that's not going to be easy and it's not going to be cheap. So thank you for that, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, councillor McConnell. I will now call upon the committee chairs to introduce their reports. The chairs can speak about the reports for up to five minutes. Mayor Torry, you have a motion to introduce the executive committee report.
I do, Madam Speaker. I would move that report for meeting 25 of the executive committee listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration with the exception of items EX 25.17 and EX 25.22, in which I had declared an interest and will do that as things unfold in the appropriate order today. We dealt with a number of important items at the executive committee meeting, and I want to thank the members of the committee and members of council and all the public deputants who took part in the meeting, and I want to just touch on a couple of the items that will be, of course, before us today. First of all, we considered a very important report that advances the planning and design work for the relief line and the Young subway extension, and also moves us forward with respect to the relief line north, which some of our members are suggesting should be called the Don Mill subway. But I think on the relief line itself, we are asked here to approve today, and we did approve at the executive committee, an adjustment to the alignment in order for staff to complete the environmental assessment process, and this is a crucial step in advancing the process, which of course will provide a substantial degree of relief at the Young Bluer interchange, which is a huge pinch point for the transit commuters at the moment, and it will pave the way for future expansions of our transit system to relieve congestion on the Young Line. And the report does recommend the initiation, and I think this is a very important step that we should be taking note of, the initiation of some work and the development of the initial business case for the relief line north, which will continue the expansion of the transit network. And when I say that we have to build and to build and to build, and I know there are some hurdles to be overcome, but I think what we're looking to do here, Madam Speaker, is to find ways to say yes to doing these things and confront some of the hurdles that exist, financial and otherwise, but move forward with these things so that we don't fall into the trap we've fallen into in the past. The report also recommends, Madam Speaker, advancing the planning and design work for the Young subway extension, but the report is very clear that this work must not proceed until the relief line is operational so that the former, meaning the extension, doesn't increase congestion on the Young Street subway line in North York. And also, I would point out that we had deputations at the executive committee from the mayors of Markham, the Chair of York Region, and also the mayor of Richmond Hill, and they came because the Young subway extension is important to them, but what's important to me and to us, I believe, Madam Speaker, respectfully, is that they are going to be advocating with me and with this council for the funding of the relief line project. And I think this is a huge step that is going to be helping us in what is a much more difficult task than I would have thought in terms of convincing the province of Ontario to step up, as I was trying to convince them to do this morning at the Pape Station, and indicate their commitment to fund the building of the relief line beyond the initial funding, which I gratefully acknowledge on your behalf for the planning and design of Seine. The federal government has come to the table, but I think members of this council will know we cannot hope but to build the relief line, the relief line itself, the Northern relief line, or the other priority projects we have endorsed, we as a council, the Scarborough East, Eglington East LRT, and the waterfront, without their help. A second, Madam Speaker, we considered a report from our city manager outlining the city budget direction and schedule. And let's again remember, Madam Speaker, I say through you respectfully to my colleagues, what we're doing here is beginning a process as we do every year, and in no way does it presume what the result of that process is going to be, but rather it sets out a process, the first steps in a process, and there is no proposal from staff, no proposal from councillor Crawford, no proposal from me that we cut any services whatsoever. What we are doing, though, is to say before we ask taxpayers to commit to a single extra dollar coming from their pockets, that we will examine the spending we are presently doing on the widest possible range of city services and make sure that that money is spent effectively. This is the beginning of a process. We are simply asking the departments to prepare their budgets on the basis of a 0% increase, and then the council, this council, will decide through the budget process and ultimately in a meeting we will have next winter where additional monies are best spent. And I anticipate, Madam Speaker, as was the case last year and the year before and the year before and the year before, that additional monies, new monies, will be allocated to priority areas, and that this will not involve the cutting of services, but rather careful decisions on where we're going to allocate additional resources. The final thing I'll mention, Madam Speaker, is that we considered a report, which will be considered here on a new model for dealing with the city's real estate in order to make the best use of these important assets. Examples are brought to my attention literally every day, including today, of instances in which people are off dealing with our real estate in a non-strategic manner. I think this is going to help us. I know many councillors have talked to our staff about this. I thank the staff and I thank councillors for all the input we've received and look forward to receiving more as we move this forward at this council meeting. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I look forward to our discussions.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Minin Wong, you have a motion to introduce certain items from the executive committee report?
Yes, that items EX 25.17 and EX 25.22 from meeting 25 of the executive committee be presented for consideration.
Thank you. councillor Mahavik, you have a motion to introduce the board of health report?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I am pleased to request that the report from meeting 19 of the board of health listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration. I would draw council's attention to two items on that, on the agenda, that they may be interested in. One is the implementation resources for the Toronto overdose action plan. I know that people know that we do have a drug overdose epidemic, not just in Toronto, in Canada, and frankly, even in the United States. We need to do what we can on that front, and we need to do it now. If it was any other issue, car accidents, children's deaths, they are numbering in the dozens by the month and in the hundreds by the year. So the overdose, sorry, there is a secretariat that we have and a committee that we have that's very aptly chaired by councillor Cressy, that has come forward with a request to, and the request was made last month with an attempt to try to get some provincial money. Those conversations are in a very, very good place to get 100% funding from the province, but they haven't yet concluded. So the request here is for this particular year to look at funding it from city resources. At the end of the day, because we have some money left, some ceiling money left from the provincial budget allocated for public health, at the end of the day, it would cost us $44,000 to leverage another $180,000, something of that order, to basically put in place three people to work on overdose prevention and response training, which is urgently needed, and it will have a direct impact on the saving of people's lives. The second item that's on the agenda that I would draw to your attention is the student nutrition program subsidies. And frankly, I think that is not a good news story. I think it's a great news story for us as a council and for the children and youth of the city of Toronto. This report basically distributes the money to the various schools, and I think we can proudly report to our community that with this year's additional allocation, we are funding 600 schools, about 159 in the Catholic Board and something like 441 in the public Board. We are serving 200,000, just under 200,000 students each and every day with a, well, not each and every day, but certainly many days, Monday to Friday, because we don't have enough provincial and federal funding, which I'll get to in a sec. But our contribution is allowing 200,000 students to basically begin their day with a good nutritious breakfast or snack program that is allowing them to learn better and to also frankly behave better. There is nothing worse than anyone frankly who has not had a good start to the morning from a nutrition perspective. So that something is really powerful for us to have done a powerful story that I think we should be all very proud of. that I think we should be all very, very proud of. Noting, of course, that there's one year left in the five-year plan that became a six-year plan, and that's 2018, but we'll deal with that in the budget. But we can then say by the end of 2018, if we fund that piece, that we have done our job to fund 20% of the program. I can also report there that we have had many, many meetings, and more are coming with the province and the federal government to get their participation, to get their, them to ante up their 20%. The province is well on route to doing that. The federal government has never been part of student nutrition programs, but they are certainly, there are people within the Liberal Caucus that are working on that issue. And we are supporting them as much as possible, not just alone as the city of Toronto, but with partners, frankly, across the country. So, that is, I would say, in a pretty good place right now. So, I commend these reports for your consideration. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Minwan, you have a motion to introduce the Civic Appointments Committee report?
Yes, that the report from meeting 16 of the Civic Appointments Committee listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration.
Thank you. Councillor Pasternak, you have a motion to introduce the Community Development and Recreation Report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. That the report from meeting 20 of the Community Development and Recreation Committee listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration. I would simply draw to your attention item 20.6, Funding Allocations for Shelter and Related Services, a vital report that's come forward that maps out the future funding for vital community service. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson, you have a motion to introduce the Economic Development Committee report?
Yes, good morning, Speaker. That the report from meeting 21 of the Economic Development Committee listed on the agenda for council be presented for consideration. I wanted just to highlight a few things on the agenda that we dealt with at committee, Speaker. Particularly ED 21.5, which basically deals with improving services for youth with experiences in the criminal justice system. There is a tremendous challenge that's being faced by young people who are being underemployed and, in fact, are having challenges finding jobs and so on. And part of the issue, Speaker, is that the system continues to be changed in a way that actually is detrimental to their interests and their development. So, they may have bought themselves into some challenges and so on in the criminal justice system. And in order to extricate themselves from that particular process going forward as they develop into a much more mature age and into adulthood, there is a stigma, there's a strain that seeming to affect their progression and their development, which is causing a position for many of these young people to, in essence, to be amputating their spirits and their opportunities for development. There's a requirement, then, for dependency on the system because they're not able to get jobs, they're not able to have opportunities and so on because of the record. And the federal government has changed the conditions with respect to pardons, for example. The length of time has now been extended. The cost in terms of doing that has also been extended. And we're recognizing that it's creating tremendous hardship for young people in the city. We are not suggesting that young people who commit criminal offenses and so on shouldn't be responsible for their actions. That's not what's being suggested. We're just suggesting, though, that the system that is in existence now is creating such a tremendous burden on them as they develop further in terms of their, you know, professional opportunities and so on. That's creating a problem. So, we're looking at asking for some changes there. Additionally, Speaker, when young people are in the system, there is no real training, there's no real help to assist them in terms of developing any type of occupational development and so on. So, in essence, they come out of penal institutions into our society, and then they will continue to do the same things that they did in order to survive. And those conditions are causing them to obviously go back into the system. We're asking the provincial government to help, and certainly the federal government as well. Additionally, Speaker, on the agenda, ED 21.3, the city's desire to bid for a designation as a United Nations Educational, Scientific and Cultural Organization, otherwise known as UNESCO, for a creative city of media arts, which would bring us into a network of about 116 cities around the world. And this would create huge opportunities in terms of Toronto being a film, television, and cultural arts city and bring that notoriety around the world. And then I'd like to simply finally draw members' attention to ED 21.5. It is the time for the annual major cultural grant allocation. That particular item is on the agenda for consideration. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you. Councillor Ainsley, you have a motion to introduce the Government Management Committee report?
Aye, good morning, Madam Speaker. The report from meeting 20 of the Government Management Committee listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration.
Thank you. Councillor Palacio, you have a motion to introduce the Licensing and Standards Committee report?
Yes, I do, Madam Chair, and members of council. Good morning to everyone. That the report from meeting 19 of the Licensing Standards Committee listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration. Madam Speaker, I will just take a couple of minutes to go over a couple of items that were before the committee that were of main importance. The first one is LS 19.1, amendments to Chapter 693 signs as it relates to election signs. And this item has been held for debate. And the next one, the amendment 1, is LS 19.2. That's a graffiti management plan as it relates to street art. As you may recall, Madam Speaker, as you as member of the committee, there was a request if city staff could make a presentation on the street art here at council. But we're advised that's not possible. So, I'm going to attempt just to bring members of council and members of the public is up to date with the tremendous success of that, in five years, literally speaking, this street art that's the key and the pillar of the graffiti management plan has captured the hearts and souls not only of the arts community in city of Toronto, but the arts community throughout the world. I think that's extremely important to note. And I am delighted and proud at the same time that the street art program has reached new heights. And I can only imagine where this program is going, being a key component of the graffiti management plan that was adopted by city council in 2012. As noted in the report, the street art program aims to develop, support, promote, and increase awareness of street art as is an indispensable role in adding beauty and character to our local neighborhoods. It's also important to note that this program is, given the multicultural and diversity that we have in this great city of Toronto, this program not only promotes the creativity and cultural vibrancy of this great city, but also helps us to celebrate our cultural roots, traditions. And that's been done one mural at a time. That's been done one bridge at a time. And this is going to be done one wall at a time, which is very impressive. The report speaks to the beautiful pieces of art that has been created all throughout the city of Toronto, within all the four quadrants of the city. So, we've been trying, literally speaking, very hard to ensure that public art, it's going to reflect what we are doing here all throughout the city. And that has been done very effectively. And that's thanks to the amazing work from city staff, as well as the arts community and community leaders. So, it's been a wonderful experience. And the partnerships that have been created with the Toronto Police Service and MetroLinks. All of that is great and something amazing that's happening, especially as it relates to innovative design, use the street art to tell Toronto stories, connect with neighborhood beautification strategies, attract private and public sector support, provide mentorship and training opportunities. And that's to those people who are trying to learn from the best, combat graffiti vandalism that has been a tremendous problem in the past. And what we are having all throughout is just amazing. And, of course, provide ongoing maintenance. In essence, members of council, the street art program is one of the most creative initiatives ever supported by this council. And as Chair of the committee, I couldn't be any happier and proud of what's been accomplished all across the city. And that's thanks also to the amazing work of city staff as well as the arts community. Thank you so much.
Councillor McMahon, just one moment. You have a motion to introduce the Parks and Environment Committee report?
Yes, I do, thank you. Good morning, everyone. That the report from meeting, sorry, 18 of the Parks and Environment Committee listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration. And we had an exciting day talking about our pollinator protection strategy as well as unanimously passing the strategy to expand the city's tree canopy on private lands. And so, through the Parks and Trees Foundation, we will be able to continue to give, empower groups and give out grants of $1.06 million to groups. So, if you have a group in your neighborhood who wants to plant, as well as, we're interested in supporting LEAF on this initiative. And we will talk about Transform TO at length. We'll have an exciting presentation, hopefully, tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Shiner, you have a motion to introduce the Planning and Growth Management Committee report?
I do, Madam Speaker. That the report from meeting 20, the Planning and Growth Management Committee listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration. As I have in previous meetings, I can stand up and tell you about the number of affordable housing units that are in this agenda. Unfortunately, the number is zero.
Shame, shame.
And there are 1,526 units being approved. None are affordable. There are a couple of sites in Toronto where funding has been achieved towards Toronto community housing projects or affordable housing. But if we were going with our numbers of 10%, which is what we strive to do, we'd have 152 units instead of none. But staying with the agenda, as the speaker would like me to do.
Yes, please.
And I appreciate the opportunity to make those comments at every meeting. There is an item PG 20.3, prioritizing the scheduling of Ontario Municipal Board cases related to Toronto. And my colleagues, I put this motion on the agenda as it's important to understand that because we now have the Toronto Local Appeals Body, we have created a tremendous amount of time at the Ontario Municipal Board for hearings. Because 50% of all the hearings were for minor applications from the city of Toronto, on average, from the previous years. The concern is that that time will not be used to deal with the important items that we've had appeal there, such as our zoning bylaw, where we're using two, when every time someone goes to Committee of Adjustment, it's been there since 2013. We're dealing with our neighborhood and apartment policies, and so many other of the policies that this council approved were appealed to the Ontario Municipal Board. And we have not been hearing that the time that is now available will be used for those. And my concern, then, is that applications that were filed with the city, when the clock runs out after 180 days, applicants, because of our tardiness in getting some of these through, will appeal to the board to try and speed themselves up and take advantage of the time that we've actually created by doing our own local appeals. of the time that we've actually created by doing our own local appeals. When what we really need is for that time to be allocated towards clearing up the backlog that's been created by appeals of our major policy documents. And the fact that we have documents around there now from 2013 and is 2017, four years later, four years, policies that we've wanted to have in place or more have been held up by appeals makes it very difficult for the city to operate and our planning division to operate in a proper framework. So I put it on the committee with the request of the province that they allocate the time that City of Toronto taxpayers have now freed up by paying for the operation of the Toronto Local Appeals Body and allocate that time to clear up the policies that are here. And I'm certainly hoping that we'll be able to achieve that. Because if not, it'll just make the Ontario Municipal Board better for those that don't want to work with the city and worse for the city itself. Thank you.
Councillor Robinson, you have a motion to introduce the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. That the report from meeting 21 of the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration.
Thank you. Councillor Grimes, you have a motion to introduce the Tobico York Community Council report?
Yes, I do. And good morning, Madam Speaker. That the report from meeting 22 of the Tobico York Community Council listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration.
Councillor Pasternak, you have a motion to introduce the North York Community Council report?
Yes, I do, Madam Speaker. That the report from meeting 22 of the North York Community Council listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration.
Councillor Holland, you have a motion to introduce the Scarborough Community Council report?
Great. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and good morning. That the report from meeting 22 of Scarborough Community Council listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration.
Councillor Wong-Tam, if you can please take your seat. Councillor Wong-Tam, you have a motion to introduce the Toronto and East York Community Council report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker, I do. I move that the report from meeting 24 of the Toronto East York Community Council listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration. And also with that, thank our amazing clerk support staff who were able to help us move through 92 items in a very timely fashion. Compared that to Scarborough City Council with 18 items, North York with 46 items, and East York Community Council with 39 items. Oh, sorry, Atobico, sorry. Tobico, sorry.
Thank you. Councillor Fragodakis, you have a motion to introduce the new business from city officials?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. That the new business from city officials listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration.
All right, okay. So if I can ask the Mayor to leave, we're gonna, yeah. So all, we'll vote on the Deputy Mayor's motion, his introduction to the Executive Committee on the two items only. All those, well, let's have a recorded vote. The Deputy Mayor introduced two items from the Executive Committee, and so we're voting Yes. Well, for members of council that were not here when we started, is that there was two items on the Executive Committee that the Mayor had an interest in, so we've separated it. And the Deputy Mayor has introduced those two items, and the Mayor has introduced the balance of the agenda.
Councillor Carr Giannis, please.
That's why we're taking two votes.
The motion to introduce the two Executive Committee items, number 17 and 22, carries 37 to 1.
Okay, thank you. So all those in favour of the balance of the motions, recorded vote.
The motion to introduce the balance of the report carries unanimously 39 in favour.
Are there any declarations of interest? Please indicate the committee, the item or motion number and the nature of the interest. Put your name up, request to question staff. Mayor Tory.
Yes, Madam Speaker, I would like to declare an interest in respective items EX 25.17, the short stream utility permit item, and the item EX 25.22, the FM radio smartphones. And this is on account of my previously disclosed continuing association with the Rogers family interest, but out of an abundance of caution, these affect or potentially affect Rogers communications.
Thank you. I will now call for petitions. Are there any petitions at this time? Councillor Dusset.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have petitions here with 519 signatures. The petition is, "We, the undersigned, urge you to campaign in," sorry, to champion in council the adoption of the Aggressive Plan of Climate Action for the City of Toronto, honouring the commitments made by Mayor Tory through the signing of the Paris City Hall Declaration on December 4, 2015. We further urge that you give the highest priority to the consideration of climate change mitigation, resilience and adaptation in all council decisions." 519 signatures. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor McConnell.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I won't repeat what my colleague has said. I'll just present 420 of my constituents who have signed that petition and congratulate Lyn Adamson and Margaret Rowe, who are here, I believe, oh, right here, and Lyn Adamson, who I've known since active days in school boards. So they're still at it, and we have some good petitions here. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Palacio.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I do have also another petition that was along the same lines, that was circulated on my environment day that took place on May 20, 2017. Mayor Tory was there, thank you for coming. And the petition has 68 people, and it was submitted by Margaret Rowe from the Royal Heights. Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you. Councillor Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have a petition in regard to ED 21.5, 2017 Major Cultural Organisation allocations. It is a petition of 9,962 names calling for the police services, Toronto Police Services, to be allowed to march and be present in uniform at Toronto Pride. And the signatures are from Toronto and all over Canada.
Thank you. Councillor McMahon.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I too have a petition for, in strong support of Transform TO, with over 100 people signing that, and I believe 1,400 altogether. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor De Baermaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'll also be presenting to council, to the Mayor and council members, the same petition, urging us to champion the adoption of the Climate Change Plan for the City of Toronto, honouring the commitments made by Mayor John Tory through the signing of the Paris City Hall Declaration of December 4, 2015.
Thank you. Councillor Grimes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have a, I'd like to declare an interest, appropriate time to do that?
We already did it.
I know, I have another one here, just page nine. SC 22.10, heavy vehicle prohibition pharmacy between Shepherd Avenue East and Finch. I have, I own a transportation legislative committee, my trucks could be travelling on that, so I will declare an interest.
Okay, can you just repeat that for the clerk, please?
SC 22.10, heavy vehicle prohibition. I own a transportation legislative committee, my trucks could be travelling on that road.
On page nine, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. All those in favour of receiving the petitions? On favour? Okay, before, I continue. Councillor Matlow, you're ready now for your announcement before we get into the items?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I want to, I want to share a really lovely story, but also a challenge from residents of Midtown Toronto. Some of you may have heard, and certainly Councillor John Burnside has, he's been an active supporter of Sarah and Claire's Food Drive. It was, it begun in 19, or rather, 2008 by Sarah Jordan, who's now 14 years old, and her sister Claire, who's now 11. And at that time, they and our Leeside and Davisville communities raised and collected a cumulative 290,000 pounds of food for the daily bread food drive. It's become the largest community-based fundraiser for the daily bread. And last year alone, 14 schools and over 7,000 students were involved, as well as many local Leeside and Davisville businesses, and they raised 75,000 pounds of food. This year is the 10th anniversary of the Food Drive, and Sarah and Claire would like to make it the biggest year ever. So they're actually looking for more communities to get involved, and they requested that I express their challenge to you and your respective communities. More schools, more businesses. If you, as a councillor, as a leader in your community, would like to get your community involved in Sarah and Claire's Food Drive, you can go to www.sarahandclairssfooddrive.com. I'm also going to be sending out a one-page letter from Sarah and Claire directly to you, so you can share with your local school councils and local businesses. But this really is, I just, I love how, while we, you know, deservedly talk a lot about the work that those of us in council and our staff and those of us at City Hall are working on every day here within the chambers, we also know that we are here to support our residents and certainly our youth who are taking leadership roles in making our city a more generous and caring place. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, I will now review the order paper. We have one deferred committee item on this agenda, item AU 8.4, headed management of the city's employee, extended health and dental benefits faced to ineffective controls in plan design, leaving the city vulnerable to potential benefit abuse. The Mayor has designated the following items as his key matters for this meeting. The first key matter will be item EX 25.1, headed advancing planning and design for the relief line and young subway extension. And the second key item will be item EX 25.9, headed citywide real estate transformation. This will be our first and second item of business today. Notices and motions are scheduled to be dealt with at 2pm tomorrow, only if the Mayor's key items have been completed. I propose that City Council set a time for a closed session if required later in the meeting. Members of council, before I take additional hold, I wish to rule on Scarborough Community Council, item 22.14, regarding a community sign installation on Guildwood Village. Last year, City Council delegated to the General Manager of Transportation Services final decisions and approvals for neighbourhood and business area identification signage and encroachments on city highways pursuant to the neighbourhood and business area identification sign policy. The General Manager has the sole discretion to refer any application for neighbourhood and business area identification signage to Community Council for consideration and final decision on a question of sign copy. Council's procedures have been amended to reflect this delegation. So I'm making that ruling, Councillor Isley, you're...
Yeah, sorry, on a point of privilege, I guess, first, what's your ruling?
You want me to repeat that?
No, I just don't, if, what are the consequence of your ruling?
Okay, so...
We approved a sign at Scarborough Community Council, is it approved or denied?
Sorry, I didn't read the next page. According as this matter, according as this matter is delegated, I am ruling that item SC 22.14 is out of order and not properly before City Council. I invite the Ward Council to consult with the General Manager of Transportation Services to seek a resolution to this matter. That's my ruling.
I have a point of order now.
Okay.
So the reason that this matter went before Scarborough Community Council, Madam Speaker, is I consulted with staff from the Transportation Office on the proper process to put this forward, and transportation staff directed me to put it before Scarborough Community Council. So now I'm being told it's out of order, now I have to go back to the same staff to ask for them under delegated authority, the same staff that told me to put it to Scarborough Community Council?
Yes.
Okay, just checking. I just want to be clear.
Yes.
It's called a France, it's called a France Cap'n d'Homme.
All right. The city clerk has noted the items that members wish to hold, and will not go through the items listed on the order paper to take additional holds. I will recognise request to make matters urgent and time specific after I go through the items for additional holds. Once the order paper has been approved by council, any change will need a two-thirds vote. Page three. Councillor Di Chiano.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to hold item AU 8.4. It's the deferred item for the auditor's report.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Fragodakis.
Thanks, Madam Speaker. It's EX 25.3, City of Toronto Multilingual Information Provisions Policy. I have a couple of questions.
Thank you. Councillor Davis.
EX 25.8, I'm holding it, and I'd like to release it. I have my questions.
Who said hold? Councillor Holiday would like to hold it? Did you want to continue holding it, Councillor Davis, or did you want to pass it on to Councillor Holiday?
I'm fine if Councillor Holiday wants to hold it.
Okay, thank you. Page four. Wow, that was fast. Councillor Layton with the fastest finger. Councillor Layton.
Out of a courtesy to the Budget Chief, if he was looking to hold EX 25.18, I will happily allow him to hold that item.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Crawford.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. That was a very quick finger there. I had it right, and I missed it. Yeah, I'd like to hold EX 25.18, 2018 Budget Process, Budget Directions and Schedule Wardal.
Thank you. Councillor Holiday.
Thank you, Speaker. I'd like to hold EX 25.11, Rental Affordability in Toronto.
Thank you.
No.
Councillor Perks.
Thank you, Speaker, and good morning. To the delight of the Chief Financial Officer, I'd like to hold EX 25.13, the operating variance for the three-month period ending March 31st.
Thank you. If we can clear the page, okay. Page five. Page six. Page seven. Councillor Holiday, page seven.
Thank you, Speaker. PG 20.1, Technical Amendments to Bylaw 569-2013.
Thank you. Councillor Layton.
Yes, thank you very much. On page seven, PW 21.8, Ten Year Cycling Network Plan 2017, Bicycle Lane Installations.
Thank you. Councillor Fragodakis.
Councillor Layton has held the item I wanted to hold. Thank you.
Okay. We can clear the page? Councillor Grimes, were you on page seven?
All pages.
Okay, if we can clear the page, please. Page eight. Councillor Grimes, you had your name up first.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. EY 22.15, Highway Alteration, Lake Shore Boulevard, west 200 metres east of Brookers Lane. I can release that with amendment, staff asking to move, it's a report, request to come back. Clerk has got it.
Does the staff have your amendment?
Yes, they do.
Okay, if we can put the amendment on the screen, that's on page eight. EY 22.15.
Brookers, yeah.
On favour of the amendment? Carried. Item is amended, on favour, carried. Thank you. Councillor Holiday.
Thank you, Speaker. I can release EY 22.8, Application to Remove a Private Tree to Saraloo Court.
Okay, on page...
So continue to hold it, Madam Speaker.
Continue, yeah, I knew it was too easy. I mean, I knew that would not happen, so... Councillor Layton. Councillor Layton?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'd like to hold EY 22.4, 22.36, Runway Rehabilitation Project at Pearson International Airport, noise impacts, and I encourage all of you who don't live in a, or aren't members of the Atobico Community Council to read Recommendation 2 of the report.
Councillor Palacio.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. EY 22.22, Status Update on the City Initiative, St Clair Avenue Studies. And as is page number eight, at the top of the page, EY 22.2, that's the status update on the City Initiative, St Clair Avenue Studies, OPA 84 and 144 between Blackthorn Avenue and Spring Grove and Scarlet Road.
Thank you. Okay, if we can clear the page? Page nine. Councillor Holiday.
Thank you, Speaker. If I may just request a recorded vote on SC 22.4, Application to Remove a Private Tree, 44 Jade Street.
Okay, so on page nine, Councillor Holiday is asking for a recorded vote on SC 22.4. Recorded vote.
So yes.
Councillor Di Giorgio, please. Councillor Pasternak.
The item carries 36 to 5.
On page 10. Councillor Cressy.
Thank you, Speaker. Item TE 24.11, Alterations to Designated Heritage Properties at 284 King Street West. I have a quick technical amendment. If I could move that now, I can release it.
Staff, does the staff have your amendment?
Yeah, it's a technical amendment from staff to include the Toronto Preservation Board recommendations.
Okay, on page 10, T 2411, Councillor Cressy is moving the amendment, on favour, carried. Item is amended, on favour, carried. Thank you. Councillor Mahavik.
Yes, thank you very much. My name is associated with TE 24.13, intention to designate under Part IV of the Heritage Act, Sixth Frank Crescent. On the advice of staff, I've been asked to put that forward to, I think, the October 6th. I think staff have the wording. Thank you. So deferred till October 2nd and 3rd.
Okay. So on page 10, T 24.13, Councillor Mahavik has motion on the screen to defer, on favour,
Councillor Matlow, please.
Councillor Robinson, please.
The deferral carries 40 to 1.
Okay, on page 11. Counselor Holliday.
Thank you, Speaker. TE 24.56, Traffic Control Signals, King West and Close Avenue. And TE 24.59, Traffic Control Signals and Turn Prohibitions, Pape Avenue and Lipton Avenue slash Toronto Parking Authority Access.
Thank you. Counselor Ainsley.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to hold CC 29.1, Declaring the Office of Counsel in Ward 44, Vacant Deciding on a Method to Fill a Vacancy. Or can I move option one and... or motion, recommendation number one and option two now? Or do you want to... I'll hold it. Okay, I'll hold it.
Yes, this is to fill the vacancy? He's holding it down, yeah. Counselor Fragodakis.
Yes, on... it's item TE 24.83, Proposed Short Term Parking on Danforth Avenue. Staff have found an error and provided me with a technical amendment. It's an additional one. If you could put it up on the screen. And if I could have a recorded vote on the whole item?
Okay, this is on...
I'm moving it.
This is on page 11, T 24.83. Do we have a technical amendment?
Yes, they provided it to me, yes.
Okay, there it is. On favor, recorded vote. Oh, on favor of the amendment, on favor, carried. Item is amended, recorded vote.
Counselor Fillion, please.
The item is amended, carries unanimously, 41 in favor.
Thank you. Mayor Torrey.
On page 11, Madam Speaker, item TE 24.43. I'd like to hold that, please.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Cressy.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. TE 24.72, Traffic Control Signals, Richmond Street West and Simcoe Street. Could I just ask for a recorded vote on that, and I can release it?
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the number on...
TE 24.72, rather than hold it, if I can just ask for a recorded vote.
Okay. Who's holding it?
I'll hold it then, thank you. Speaker, I'll hold it, thanks.
Yes, thank you. Counselor Davis.
Yes, I'd like to hold CC 29.10, Follow-Up Report Related to Local...
Okay, we're on page 11.
Oh. Okay, then I don't have anything on page 11.
Okay. Okay, we're on page 12. Counselor Davis, since you had your name up, Counselor Davis.
Yes, thank you, Speaker. I'd like to hold CC 29.10, Follow-Up Report Related to Local Road Resurfacing.
Thank you. Counselor Ainsley.
I, Madam Speaker, on page 12, at the very top, CC 29.4, Appointment of Public Members to the Toronto Atmospheric Fund Board. I'd like to release that.
Okay, on the top of page 12, CC 29.4, Counselor Ainsley is releasing, on favor, recorded vote.
Counselor Kerr Giannis, please. Counselor Lee, your vote, please.
Counselor Mamalidi, please. Counselor Mahavik, please. Counselor Cole. Counselor Burnside. Counselor Fletcher. Counselor De Ciano, please. Mayor Torrey, please.
The item carries unanimously, 41 in favor.
Thank you. Counselor Matlow.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to hold CC 29.9, 1417 to 1431 Young Street, Ontario Municipal Board Appeal, Official Plan and Zone Amendment and Rental Housing Demolition Applications, Request for Direction.
Thank you. Mayor Torrey.
Actually, I always wanted to time an item, Madam Speaker, but we're not quite there yet, so...
We're not quite there, but I'll put you...
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Cressy.
Thank you, Speaker. Item CC 29.6, 342 to 346 Davenport Road, Zoning Bylaw Amendment Application. I'd like to hold that.
Thank you. Counselor Holliday.
I was for time.
Are there any requests to make an item merge in a time specific, Mayor Torrey?
Yes, Madam Speaker. I would like to move that we time item EX 25.18, Budget Directions and Schedule, to be the first item of business on our second day tomorrow morning. And this is out of consideration for the fact I think there are likely to be a fair number of staff people from different parts of the city government that are going to be questioned in the course of that, and we can then make sure that people don't have to be sitting here all day waiting for that and can plan accordingly. And I would also like to move, Madam Speaker, that we time item EX 25.6, Proposed Stormwater Charge, to be the second item of business tomorrow, following the completion of the Budget Directions item. This is again to ensure that staff who need to be here can be here at that time, but also on account of Mr. DiGiorgio, I understand, is ill and has been ill for a couple of days, and I think this allows us to know that we're not going to get to this today anyway, and it'll just put it on for tomorrow, and hopefully he'll be better, but we'll see. So, those are my two...
Thank you. So, tomorrow morning, your recommendations for tomorrow morning?
That we do it at the first item of business is the budget directions, and following that would be the stormwater charge item, Madam Speaker.
So, the members' motions are in the afternoon? Well, then... All those in favor? Carry. Counselor Kerr Giannis.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. On page six, GM 20.7, I'd like to make that a timed item for right after Mayor Torrey. This is the Temporary Suspension of Four Seasons Site Development Limited.
Okay. Yes, actually, Counselor Holliday... I'm sorry, Counselor Kerr Giannis. Counselor Holliday was up there first, and his name was taken off, so I'm going to go to Counselor Holliday first. Counselor Holliday.
Thank you kindly, Speaker, and my motions are to try to make the agenda very efficient. I move to move AU 8.4, Management of the City's Employee Extended Health and Dental Benefits, Phase Two, Ineffective Controls and Plan Design Leaving the City Vulnerable to Potential Benefit Abuse, to be the first item after member motions, and immediately followed by item CC 29.10, on page 12, Follow-Up Report Related to Local Road Resurfacing, and the rationale is that both may involve the auditor and both may involve in-camera, and it would be efficient to put them together.
So... Okay, just one sec. Didn't Counsel... Okay, sorry, sorry. Okay, so those are the two items, all in favor, following the members' motions. Pardon?
Tomorrow then, after members' motions, and not this evening?
That's right, that would make more sense. Thank you. Counselor Kerr Giannis, sorry.
Madam Speaker, as I said before, I'd like to make GM 20.7, Temporary Suspension of Four Seasons Site Development Limited, an item held to be dealt with after the two items that the mayor is holding. They're for tomorrow.
Well, Counselor Holliday just moved the two items after the members' motions. So, do you want to try Friday? Or open Friday?
Fine, sure.
I have a lot of vacancies on Friday.
Sure.
Okay, do you want to do it Friday morning?
Sure.
All right.
No.
Counselor Shiner.
Sorry, I have a point of order.
Yeah, just a sec. Counselor Shiner, you have a point of order?
Yes.
Yes.
At the last meeting, when we did try to schedule something for the day that wasn't an official schedule of council, you told us we couldn't do that. So, I'm wondering if we haven't scheduled Friday as a day of council, why this meeting you're recommending that Counselor Kerr Giannis do it?
Just one sec, Counselor Shiner, if you don't mind, please. More than likely, we've scheduled three days, but Counselor Shiner, you're absolutely correct, and maybe we should wait to tomorrow.
I'm just looking for consistency.
Yes, I understand that, but we all know we're coming back Friday. Counselor Fletcher?
About holding... putting something time-specific in a following day, because last council, we had something time-specific, and when it came to that day, apparently I'd had to move it in the morning of that day. So, I'd like to understand. Oh, it depends on who you are, says Counselor Mamalidi.
No, please, Counselor Mamalidi, just try to keep it down. We... you know, I know that you're dying to say something today, but like, just keep your mouth shut just for a few minutes. Counselor Fletcher, every day, we adopt the Order Paper. Counselor Fletcher, every day, we adopt the Order Paper, so at that point, then, if there's any items that we need to make time-specific or reorder the Order Paper, we can do that at that time.
I do have to be clear, because we've adopted the Order Paper today. Tomorrow, we'll adopt an Order Paper.
Right.
And... but we're putting time-sensitive until tomorrow. Do we have to re-adopt that tomorrow?
Every day, we do.
And is that up to the member to reintroduce that every day?
Well, any items that members want to hold down for the following day, we'll do that tomorrow.
I'm asking if something that's been made time-sensitive...
Yes.
...today, does the member have to stand up and make that time-sensitive again tomorrow? Yes or no? Because that fell through the cracks at the last council meeting.
Right, we'll do that.
So, what is it? Which one do you have to do?
We have to do it tomorrow, Counselor.
So, why are we setting time-sensitive today when we actually have to do it tomorrow in order to have it happen?
What we're saying, the motions that have been made till date now are all items to be time-sensitive for tomorrow.
Correct.
Yes.
And my point is that does the member have to make it time-sensitive again tomorrow?
Not for the items that have been held.
Only for Friday.
Yeah. Counselor Fletcher?
Yes.
I mean, until we know how we proceed with this agenda, and then, as we move along with the agenda, then we can amend the agenda.
Last meeting, point of order, last meeting, I had held the holiday shopping to be first after members' motions, or that afternoon, and I was told that I hadn't moved it again that morning, and therefore, it wasn't heard at that time. So, I don't understand how this works now.
It wasn't... your item for the holiday shopping, the reason we didn't deal with it when you had moved, is that we were still dealing with the previous timed item, and until that item is complete, we don't deal with your item, and that's why it was deferred.
That is not correct. I will go back and look at the record. Thank you.
Counselor Fragodakis.
Yes, on a point of order, just to follow up from what Counselor Shiner was asking for, I mean, according to the council agenda, this is a three-day scheduled meeting, so I was wondering if you could clarify for me, how is it that we can't schedule things for the third day of council when this is a three-day meeting?
Yeah. Counselor Fragodakis, and this was brought up at the last council meeting as well, is that if... we can, but the agenda may change. We don't know what's going to happen today, we don't know what's going to happen tomorrow. That... so, my recommendation is wait to tomorrow to see where we are on the agenda, and then you can move items time-specific on Friday tomorrow, when we go through the consent agenda.
So, it's not that we can't make something specific for the third day, but it might...
It might change, because every day, it changes.
That's fine, thank you.
And that was Counselor Shiner's point, because at the last council meeting.
Okay, just wanted clarity.
Yeah, thank you. Counselor Kerr Giannis.
Chair, I think there was probably a slip of tongue when you addressed to Counselor Mamalidi. Maybe you can reexamine the tape and see if what was said was appropriate by yourself, Counselor Mamalidi, and if it was appropriate, fine, but if it wasn't, I thought that I should mention it to you.
Okay, next is Counselor Dusset. Counselor Mamalidi.
The actual words were "keep your mouth shut," and I'm just wondering whether or not that is parliamentary. Is there a different rule under our bylaws that says the speaker can use that form of language, and councillors are not allowed to use that form of language? It seems to me that the speaker was out of order by using that language towards me, and I'd ask her to withdraw the language she used.
Counselor Mamalidi, when I have a member of council that's chirping and continues to chirp when the speaker is speaking, then I believe those comments are in order. Counselor Kerr Giannis.
Madam Speaker, I don't think it's appropriate. I don't think in any chamber in this House, elected chamber, that language is appropriate or is used. I understand it could have been a slip of the tongue, and I would ask of you, please, to relook at the tape, and if you think it's appropriate, fine, then I will start using it, and other people in this chamber will start using it.
Thank you.
You leave by example here.
Thank you, Counselor Kerr Giannis. Counselor Mamalidi.
I will ask the speaker one more time, and if she does not withdraw it, I'll be asking the Integrity Commissioner to look into your comments. I'd ask you to withdraw the comments of keeping your mouth shut to myself, and acknowledge that that kind of language shouldn't be used by anybody in this chamber.
Okay, Counselor Mamalidi, I will withdraw the comments, but I would appreciate it if you would stop chirping. Thank you. Counselor Dusset, Chair, now I... Counselor Mamalidi, I am apologizing. I withdraw the comments. Thank you. Counselor Dusset. Timed item?
Yeah, I'm trying to work out where all the timed items are right now. What I'm wanting to do, I'll tell you what I want to do. It's page 11, CC 29.2, The Ombudsman's Report. As always, I do like to time it and have a presentation. I'm happy to do this tomorrow, or I would say after the two Auditor Generals' reports, but as I say, I'm happy to stand up tomorrow and do this if necessary.
I think it would be appropriate to wait to tomorrow.
Can I put my name first on the list for tomorrow for timed items?
Counselor McMahon, at this rate, I don't know if we're going to start the agenda. Counselor McMahon?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I would like PE 19.4, on page seven. I'd like to have a... it's transformed TO. It's a big issue, a big debate. I would like to have a presentation, and I would like to time it for tomorrow after dinner break. Make sure you come back. PE 19.4.
Okay, so Counselor McMahon, that will be if... subject to if we're finished the other timed items. If... Okay, so, we'll move your... Counselor McMahon, we'll move your motion, but it's on condition that we do complete all the other timed items first.
Sure.
Right?
I'm amenable.
Okay, thank you. On favor? Recorded vote. Recorded vote. This is on Counselor McMahon's motion?
Counselor Cole, please, Counselor DiCiano, please. The motion carries 38 to 2.
All those in favor of adopting the order paper and all items not held. Okay, just one, just, yes, you do. Chairmaker, did you say point of order? Oh, okay, so before we vote on all the items, for EX 25.17 and EX 25.22, Mayor Torrey has an interest, and as well, Counselor Grimes on SC 22.10, so Counselor Grimes? Okay, so we'll vote on these three items first. Oh, all right, okay, so on the EX 25.17 and EX 25.22 first, Counselor Grimes, you can vote on this one, recorded vote.
Counselor Fletcher, please. Counselor Pasternak? The vote to adopt EX 1.17 and 22 carries 39 to 1.
Okay, Counselor Grimes, Mayor Torrey, you can vote on this one. This is on SC 22.10, which Counselor Grimes has an interest on, recorded vote.
Counselor DiGiorgio, please, Counselor Layton. Counselor Fletcher, please, thank you, Counselor Palazzio, please. The motion to adopt SC 22.10 carries unanimously 39 in favor.
Okay, so all those in favor of adopting the order paper, excluding, and all items not held, recorded vote.
Counselor Ainsley, please, Counselor Cole, please, Counselor Fletcher, please, Counselor Palazzio. The motion carries 40 to 1.
So Counselor Shiner, is there a reason why you have your name?
Yes, Madam Speaker, I'm rising on a point of privilege.
You have three of them.
Well, in fact, it is on behalf of a number of my colleagues, and as Chair of, Giorgio for a moment? As Chair of the Planning and Growth Committee, at the last meeting, the same question was raised as at this meeting, it's that all the staff have availed themselves to counselors to deal with items on the agenda that are held, with the exception of the chief planner, the last meeting, she was not here, and I don't know if there was a reason, this meeting, she's not here, and I don't know whether you or through the deputy city manager, we can find out why that's happening, because so many items on the agenda are planning matters, and they do have questions, and there's nobody here to ask.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Shiner.
So if you can find out, and maybe in the future, if all the senior members of staff could be here, would be helpful.
Thank you. Counselor Fragadakis, do you have a point of order?
Yes, I do, thank you, I was wondering if this was the appropriate time to introduce the motions without notice?
No.
Okay.
We're not, we're not finished yet, we haven't even started the agenda yet. Okay, members of council, I just have a few, couple more pages, and then we can start the agenda. So I want to stress the importance of preparing your motions in advance, the clerk staff are here to help you prepare your motions, in particular, if you intend to move a motion during the release of holds, I will insist that your motion be prepared in advance and given to the clerk. If you do not have your motion ready, I will not recognize you, and I'm also reminding members that you must state your motion first before you speak to it. Members, City Council follows a routine for the processing and adding of any motions without notice during the meeting. Please remember that a motion without notice must include a reason for urgency, if you have an urgent motion without notice you wish to bring forward at this meeting, please give your motion to the city clerk staff, they will prepare the necessary procedure motion from my review along with your motion. The chair must agree the motion is urgent before you can seek leave to introduce it at this meeting, it will require 30 votes to add a motion without notice to the agenda during the meeting. Motions added to the agenda in this way are not subject to a vote to waive referral to a committee or agency, I will be reviewing all motions carefully, and will vice counsel after each recess which motions need a motion to add to the agenda. Now we can start the agenda, I understand, before we start. Students that are in the council chambers that I would like to welcome, please welcome the Grade 5 students from St. John Evangelist Catholic School located in Ward 11, their local counselor is Counselor Nunziad, and their group leader is Vida Jonvenko, welcome. The, they are now actually technically located in Counselor Mamalidi's ward, because they've been relocated from Ward 11 until they build a new school in my ward, so they're actually in Counselor Mamalidi's ward on Beverly Hills Drive, so this is Counselor Mamalidi where your school is located, thank you. So, counts, we will now proceed with the mayor's first key item, which is EX 25.1, advancing planning and design for the relief line and Young subway extension. Now. So we have questions to staff. Counselor Fragadakis.
Oh, thank you, so through you, to staff, if I could just have some quiet and let the staff get to their seats.
There's an awful lot of noise in the council chambers. Please, members, staff. Okay, Counselor Fragadakis.
Yes, thank you, so City Planning did a review of the proposed new higher-order transit lines a few years back, and I was wondering if somebody on staff could tell us about that and what the results were.
Through the, through the speaker, we carried out the first phase of Feeling Congested, the official plan review of the transportation components of the official plan, including an initial review of rapid transit projects, we will be reevaluating all of the rapid transit projects as part of the second phase of that review, and coming back to council, we anticipate coming back in early 2018 with the first part of that phase of the OP review.
Okay, so you looked at the maximum economic impact of the lines, and the relief line fared the best, especially when you added in the relief line north, is that correct?
The relief line was, was one of the top projects, yes.
Okay, so the report talks about the capacity on Line 1, but we do not know, we do not have capacity issues on Line 2, and where they meet at Blor Station?
Through the, through the speaker, there are capacity issues at Young and Blor Station, and that is part of what we anticipate being able to relieve through the relief line project, and that is referenced in the staff report.
I don't know if you heard my question correctly, because it is kind of noisy in here, but what I said was, the report talks about the capacity on Line 1, but do we not have capacity issues on Line 2, and where they meet at Blor Station?
Through the speaker, so we do not have the same kind of capacity challenges on Line 2, the TTC may wish to address that further, but at Young and Blor Station, yes, you are correct, there are capacity challenges.
Sorry, Madam Speaker, I'm having trouble hearing. Sorry, I'm just saying it's actually, if we could ask for some quiet, it's very difficult to hear.
Okay, members of council, please, Counselor DiCiano?
TTC currently does not have capacity issues.
Counselor Burnside? Please, it's hard, we can't hear, the staff answer the questions.
Actually, it's the staff can't hear the questions.
Through the chair, TTC currently doesn't have capacity issues on Line 2, right now we're at about 85% on Line 2, and ATC will increase the capacity on Line 2, but as was said before, we do have capacity issues at the Young Blor Station.
So where are we with the planning and sourcing funding for the much-needed upgrade to Blor Station?
Through the speaker, we are presently studying the capacity challenges at Young Blor Station, we have a consultant doing that work presently, we're looking at four options at the moment, and that work is scheduled to be completed at the end of this year. Upon completing that, we'll be able to do some estimating to figure out how much we do need to carry forward in the budget ask.
One of the recommendations calls for a robust community consultation plan developed as part of planning the Don Mills Line, what might that entail, and would it be any different than what occurred for the relief line south?
Well, Madam Speaker, the report recommends we do an initial business case, and that would necessarily involve a similar type of...
I just don't, I...
Hold my time.
Counselor DiCiano and Counselor Burnside, no, I'm, please, I'm sorry, there's too much noise. Please. I, I guess they don't want to sit down, I just don't know.
Okay, well.
Okay.
So Madam Speaker, yes, we would necessarily have a robust consultation program on the initial business case that we would bring forward for your consideration at a later date, thank you.
Thank you, so Recommendation 13 calls for further consultation with York Region and Metrolinks to identify and evaluate other possible measures to address Line 1 demand, so we've already done a lot of that, though, the TTC's 2012 Downtown Rapid Transit Expansion Study 2, and Metrolinks's 2015 Young Relief Network Study, purpose was to identify and examine solutions to Line 1 overcrowding, correct?
Madam Speaker, that's correct.
Okay, do we know what those studies cost, how many public meetings were held?
Yes, we had, we would have that information, I don't have it right off the top of my head, but we do have that information.
I guess I'll ask you that offline, so those were extensive studies, did they both confirm we need a relief line to cope with overcrowding on our current lines?
Yes, Madam Speaker, it did.
So are there any recommendations from those two studies that we're not implementing?
No, they were all implemented, I believe, yes.
Okay, so I'll get that answer from you later about the cost and the, and the meetings, very good.
Thank you. Counselor Robinson?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, the relief line that's being proposed really only provides relief in my mind, south of Blor, so my question is, in the next 10 years, what are you going to do with, to deal with Shepherd down to Blor?
Through the speaker, the recommendations about moving forward, advancing the work on relief line north, are about addressing the, the capacity issues that we see north of Blor on Line 1.
Counselor, if I might add to that, we are aware of the issues north of Blor, what we do need to do is upgrade and greatly enlarge Young and Blor Station to provide additional relief at that location, plus, as you know, we're implementing automatic train control in phases, that will be fully in on Line 1 by the end of 2019, that plus the additional capacity provided by the Tronner rockets, of which there are 82, and which are already deployed on Line 1, does provide some relief, but we're committed to looking at other options in the meantime. The reason we've mentioned relief line north in here is because we do recognize that more will need to be done in order to provide relief north of Young and Blor.
So I'm glad you brought up ATC, so we're now looking at a deadline of 2020, can you ensure that's going to happen, and is it possible to accelerate that?
Right, so the budget, sorry, the ATC project is on time and on budget, we're starting from the other end, because the TYSSE, which will open in December, needs to have clearly a functioning signaling system, it makes no sense to put in conventional signaling on TYSSE, so we're doing it in phases, going around Line 1, and that will conclude with the line up to Finch by the end of 2019, so yes, I can confirm that, it's on time and it's on budget, what was the second part of your question, Counselor?
Can you accelerate it?
Right, that, that, that is fraught with risk, because we're not talking about paving a road, we're talking about implementing a safety critical system, for which you have to have not only the hardware in place, but also the software in place, and it needs to be done when the railway is not, is not operating, so we have the luxury of closing the subway in order, then we could accelerate ATC, absolutely, but clearly we don't have that option, so my strong advice is stick to the existing timeframe, and don't put at risk what is currently on time and on budget.
Okay, but do you agree that the relief line south of Blor is going to take pressure off this southern part of the city versus that piece that I'm speaking of, Shepherd to, you know, Shepherd to Eglington and a bit farther south?
What the relief line south will do is take some people off the critical interchange point of Young and Blor, because rather than go west on Line 2 and interchange at Young and Blor, and add to the already congested part of Line 1 south of Young and Blor, people will instead be incentivized by another option, to go via the relief line south from Pape down Carlo.
Okay, and I've talked about this many, many times, at executive, at this council, again, to represent my ward, York Mills, Lawrence, Eglington, as you know, two, three, four trains to get on at peak hours, the infrastructure is out of control there, that's meaning the development, could you start trains at York Mills, start empty trains at York Mills to accommodate that, what's happening there that simply is out of control?
We're committed to continuing to look at all options, I mean, if you start trains further south to go south, what you have to, what we would have to evaluate, and we've looked at these options in the past, is what the impact upon overall line capacity would be, because not only would you then not be serving the areas north of York Mills up to Finch, and there's very heavy traffic coming down from Finch, but also because you would be reversing trains there, in other words, taking them off the northbound, putting them into the pocket track, and then having to route them south from the pocket track to go south, that takes literally time, and that would impact upon line capacity, so we'd have to evaluate to make sure that we weren't actually making the problem worse.
Okay, could you evaluate that?
We already are, and we are looking at every possible option to add, to add capacity, to squeeze existing capacity on Line 1, short of what the real solution is, which is 1, ATC, and 2, the relief line.
Okay, thank you, and to the chief planner, I came from a John Fisher I came from a John Fisher rally this morning, where it's yet another development happening in the young Eglington area. My understanding is from Midtown and Focus, Toronto's overall population is increasing by 9% in the young Eglington area, the heart of this area, it's at 34% over the last 10 years.
Councilor Robinson, that was your last question.
Okay, so if I could just ask you if you would consider not approving new buildings in this area due to the lack of capacity on the young line?
Through the chair, as per the Planning Act, we in fact are required to go through the approvals process. What we can in fact do is recommend a refusal if the development is not in keeping with the city's policy framework. The intention of Midtown and Focus is to put as-of-right zoning in place so that there will be more clarity as to what the infrastructure needs are. In keeping with Andy Byford's comment about the increased capacity as a result of automatic train control being complete in 2019, as well as the Eglington Crosstown, we do believe that moving forward in the next several years, we are going to see some relief in terms of seeing more transit capacity in the area.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Matlow?
Madam Speaker, at repeated council meetings, I've asked this question of the city manager, the TTC CEO, and the chief planner. What is the evidence-based top transit infrastructure priority or expansion priority that Toronto has? And each time, the answer has been consistently the relief line. I'd like to ask both Mr. Byford and Ms. Kiesmat if they stand by that answer today.
Counselor, I'll go first, if I may, Jennifer. TTC's perspective certainly would be the relief line, but we recognize that it needs to be seen as part of a overall transit network. Therefore, they're not binary, that doesn't preclude other important initiatives such as fare integration, such as SmartTrack, and other things that need to be done.
I'm sorry, may I just clarify? Are you suggesting that SmartTrack is just as much of a priority as the relief line based on evidence?
No, what I was saying, and I'm happy to repeat it, what I was saying was, they're not binary, it's not either-or. Absolutely, the relief line needs to be a priority for the TTC, but given that that takes time to achieve, if there's something else that can be done in the interim, and SmartTrack is a faster or a more immediate solution, as is fare integration, that doesn't mean it's a case of you do one, but you don't do the other. I think we should see these as a package.
Are you suggesting that SmartTrack is going to be relieving the Young and Blor pinch point the way that the relief line would?
No, again, I'll reiterate, Counselor, the point I was making was, I've answered your question. I've said to you that from the TTC's perspective, the relief line is and always has been a priority, but that doesn't preclude other items within the existing plan.
Of course, there are other priorities. Ms. Kiesmat, what say you?
Through the speaker, in the context of our 2013 analysis, the relief line was identified as the key first priority amongst a series of network priorities.
Thank you for your candor. Young North extension to York Region. We've done feeling congested, we've done other studies to try to set priorities as far as transit expansion. Where does that fit? The mayor has suggested through executive committee that the Young North extension should be considered concurrently with the relief line, and made an announcement, in fact, with York Regional Mayor just the other day to that point. Is the York extension, the Young North extension, just as much of a priority as the relief line? Or, and may I address this specifically to the chief planner, or are there other rapid transit priorities that should come first, based on needs?
Through the speaker, in the context of our 2013 Feeling Congested analysis, we did include the extension to York Region in our modeling analysis, and it was not one of the top 10 projects. In 2018, we will be revisiting that analysis and giving new assumptions, and it might bump around, but in the 2013 analysis that we're currently working on, it was not in the top 10.
Thank you, thank you again, Ms. Kiesmat. And then last question to Mr. Byford again. A question was asked earlier that in some way suggested that the first phase of the relief line would in some way only help people south of Blor, in the downtown area. You answered that, but I just want to make it crystal clear, because I don't want any mythology or false assumptions to be made. Is it a fact or not that if we focus on relieving the pinch point of Young and Blor Station, that those of us who commute from north of Blor, let's say in Midtown Toronto, Young and Eglington area, will see relief with respect to capacity, given that that pinch point has been relieved, that congested point in the middle?
Both things have to be done. Absolutely, we've got to build the relief line south, plus we have to do the expansion work at Young and Blor, which is a very heavily congested key point of interchange, and that work will also need to be done. What will provide the relief for Young North or the midtown element of line one that you suggested, one, ATC, and the rocket chains that we've already got deployed, and two, ultimately, we believe there will need to be a relief line north. That's why this is included within the paper before you.
Thank you very much, and I have actually one final question for Mr. Racini. It just occurs to me, given that we've received confirmation that the relief line is indeed the top, if not a key, transit expansion priority to deal with the existing overcrowding on our system, most especially right at the pinch point of Young and Blor.
Councilor Matlow, your last question.
So just to conclude the question, we've been funding other expansion projects, such as the one-stop subway to Scarborough Town Centre. Aside from the provincial funding for the preliminary studies, how much have we dedicated to the city's top priority?
Through you, Madam Speaker, we do not have any money other than, I think there's a small amount for planning and development, included in the approved 10-year capital forecast.
Thank you, Councilor Mahavik?
Yes, thank you. Just by way of preface, I am starting to see how the relief line meets all our number requirements and will ease pressure, and it is an essential piece of infrastructure that needs to be built. I am wondering, though, is it more appropriate to use the language, it is the top priority, or is it part of a matrix of priorities, maybe top five priorities that need to happen concurrently? And the reason why the question is important is because if you say it's the top one, then you drop other things that you have going down the pipe, and you focus on your top priority. If you say it's in the top five priorities, then it's a little bit of a matrix saying, you know what, there's also Eglington East happening, there's also Eglington West happening, there's also the waterfront happening, and we kind of need to juggle a bunch of these, and to over-prioritize might actually be a little bit unhelpful.
Madam Speaker, I've got several answers to the question. First, on the Feeling Congested criteria, we ranked a series of priorities, and the ranking had the time and the circumstances of that ranking at that time. We bring it forward, relief line was the top priority amongst a series of priorities. I'd also observed that we've had a number of election campaigns and announcements, political announcements around priorities in the city that also color the debate. We've also had direction from council on a number of these projects, maybe not saying priorities, but asking us to take action on specific projects. So to say that there's one list with one definitive thing, I think would be doing us a disservice. We were accumulating a lot of projects, we're getting them through the development of the EA process, and therefore, we think that that's the way to prioritize the...
So would it be also fair to say that if you prioritize one way, the relief line comes out on top? If you prioritize another way, say, inclusion of more marginalized communities, you might find that Eglington East comes out ahead of downtown relief line. If you're looking at employment zones, you might say Eglington West comes out a little bit ahead because of the connection with the airport lands and SmartTrack with its link to Markham.
Madam Speaker, I would say in answer, I let Jennifer answer more fully, but we comprehensively addressed those questions in Feeling Congested. It was intended to cover the wide spectrum of criteria, and those issues were canvassed in Feeling Congested.
Through the speaker, of the eight criteria that we identified, we also went through an exercise where we didn't weight the criteria equally, but we in fact prioritized different criteria. So for example, supporting growth could be prioritized. You can see that a link to the airport would in fact be higher under supporting growth. Affordability, supporting neighborhood improvement areas, social equity is one of the criteria as well. You can take any one of the eight criteria and pick it out and use it as the basis for analysis, and you will get a different set of priorities. So when I identify that the priorities in front of city council, that is under the scenario where we weighted the criteria equally. The reason for that is in our extensive public consultations, we asked the public to take these eight criteria and pick three, and the public came back to us and very strongly indicated that they felt all eight criteria, supporting the environment, supporting healthy neighborhoods, supporting social equity. All of the criteria matter, and that we should use the weighting of those criteria equally to evaluate the priorities moving forward.
Right, so what I'm hearing here is frankly a more complex answer than simply a single line, and you know, I'm thankful for... We're not prioritizing them 1, 2, 3, 4, we're prioritizing, here's a package of things that we need to get together, we're highlighting this one now, but at other moments, we highlight other ones, and together to build a city, to be growth-oriented, social equity-oriented, employment-oriented, we need to have a complex analysis and numerous projects going forward, frankly, at more or less the same time.
So, Madam Speaker, that's correct, we're actually trying to get the relief line south to a point that's on a similar design...
Very quickly, are you assuming that from Pape north has to be a subway, or do the numbers allow for possibly, given that it eventually makes its way up to Shepherd, and that's a heck of a lot of subway money, or can we be thinking that you'll be thinking or analyzing light rail as a possibility with Pape being the node?
Counselor, that's your last question.
Well, the answer to that, through you, Madam Speaker, is yes. We're looking at the initial business case, it will look at technology, route phasing, and a variety of things, so we've not locked in on a specific technology currently.
Thank you. Councilor Audrey Mary, I understand that you wanted to declare an interest?
Yes, thank you. Page 8, NY 22.2, refusal request, zoning amendment application, 14 to 16 Elvina Gardens, 197 and 197 R Erskine Avenue, in that my family owns property in the immediate area.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Davis, question?
Thank you, Speaker, I wanted to focus on operating costs. I did that at committee, and I want to again. Currently, the Scarborough subway extension, we've agreed to assume 100% of the operating and maintenance costs, is that correct? It's ours.
That's correct.
The Toronto-York Spadina extension, we've assumed 100% of the operating, maintenance, and lifecycle costs, is that true?
Counselor, yes, that's correct. The predicted cost, annual cost, net of revenue coming in would be $30 million per annum.
Okay, and on the LRTs, which some of us thought the provincial government was going to pay 100% of the operating costs, what are we assuming for the operating costs for the LRTs?
Through you, Madam Speaker, we've assumed 100% of the operating, 100% of the maintenance, and the province is paying 100% of the lifecycle costs.
So we virtually assumed already 100% of the operating costs of all of those expanded lines?
That's correct.
Okay, just let that hang in the air for a bit. The Young subway extension, we have another potential extension here, and this, what is before us, recommends two things, one, that we operate the Young extension, is that correct?
That's correct, that's the assumption going into the planning and design phase.
And recommendation eight says we should enter into negotiations with the city, York Region, and the province, and the federal government for capital costs. What about the operating costs of the extension of the subway, Young subway?
That is something that we would review, I don't think we have assumptions built into this where we are yet, but that will come back at the next phase when we build in where we are with the project from a capital and operating perspective.
I had the opportunity to ask the mayors that were at committee about whether or not they would assist in assuming some of the operating costs of the line that's going into York Region, and they didn't comment or sound enthusiastic in any way, other than to say, we're negotiating integrated fare structure. Would you accept an amendment that asks you not only to negotiate the capital cost, but the operating cost?
That is your prerogative, and that would be fair.
Thank you. The other thing that came up was whether or not, and I've already heard a question about whether the Young subway extension would be developed concurrently. The mayor's called it concurrently, the premier's called it concurrently, I believe, the other mayors said they wanted to see it developed concurrently, along with the relief line. Is it not the case that we have to build the relief line before we bring massive more ridership onto the Young line? Not concurrently, but before?
Madam Speaker, the 2008 City of Toronto Council direction was to only was to support the Young North extension, subject to providing the relief line. You would have to have the relief line available for capacity relief before you could open...
So that is our position.
That is our position.
The relief line first, any extension after. Okay, then I don't know why we're talking about concurrent. And just the last two questions I have, the fare integration structure, you're talking about it and make reference to it in recommendation nine. When are we really going to see some information that can help us to understand, one, what the ridership will be, and two, what our priorities will be? Because the fare structure is absolutely key to that information and including the costs. When are we going to see some information? When is Metrolinks going to debate this?
Madam Speaker, as you point out, Counselor, we're dependent on the provinces through Metrolinks' timing on this. We understand that they will continue to provide us with updates, they are collaborating to some level with us, but to be honest, I think that we'll probably hear a little bit more later this year, but hopefully, early next year.
Why are we continuing to raise our hand and say we'll assume 100% of the operating costs of all these new lines, when we have no idea what the fare structure will be?
That was your last question.
Madam Speaker, just to remind the counselor, the fare integration piece is a key principle and a key condition for us to move forward on many of these cost share principles, for that discussion to be further developed, and for the two governments to sort of come to terms on that. It is a very important point for staff, and it's something that we're paying attention to very carefully.
Thank you. Councilor Wong-Tam?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I want to ask staff with respect to clarification around priorities, and I do recognize that staffers speaking about a network that's stitched together, where you're able to carry people back and forth in a timely fashion. But I want to clarify the top priority again, because the way I read the recommendations and the way the report is outlined, it's not clear to me the number-one priority versus the verbal answer and the written answer. So again, can I please have staff clarify the number-one top construction transit priority for the system?
Through the speaker, as the chief planner indicated, our analysis in 2013 put the relief line as the top priority, and as the CEO of the TTC also confirmed. But we recognize that there is a broader network that we need to continue to build out.
Is there a reason why the answer is not so clear in the report? Because in the report, we're talking about the relief line south, the relief line north, they're all listed as key priorities, including the Young subway extension. Like, why is it that your answer on the floor of council is so much clearer than what is contained in the recommendations in the report?
Madam Speaker, the answer on the floor that was clear was in the... Madam Speaker, the answer on the floor to, that was clear was in the context of the 2013 Feeling Congested exercise at that time, and since that time, we've had additional priorities, including SmartTrack identified. So this, this current report indicates that there is pressing need for the relief line, we want to get on with the planning and design, and at some point in the near future, or in certainly 2019, we expect to come back to committee and council and recommend the network, the priorities, and ways of funding, the projects that will have advanced to the pro, to the stage where we'll have definitive numbers on 30% design that we currently don't have.
And with the Young subway extension versus the relief line south, right now, the, the request from staff and the recommendations is try to get to the, the class three portion of design, the cost estimate, so you can have the 15 to 30% design. Where are we for Young subway extension?
Young subway extension's further along in the process, they have their TPAP, and they are probably, like, looking at Susan, at 5% design, but they are ahead of us on design.
And why, why is it that the Young subway extension is further ahead than the relief line, despite the fact that repeatedly has been said by the, by staff and yourself, and that, that the relief line is the number one priority? Like, why do we keep advancing other projects when the, when the number one priority for Toronto remains the relief line?
So that, since the 2013 Feeling Congested staff have been working diligently on advancing the relief line south, and we're bringing forward today the, the similar sentiment with relief line north to get the initial business case done.
But that's, that's what you're saying to me now. But again, I think that what I, what I'm seeing is that the work will continue to advance on other projects when the relief line remains the number one priority. So how do we reconcile what is being said, what the reports in the past have said, what priorities, what councils' priorities have been, versus the actual work that you're carrying out?
So, Madam Speaker-
How do we, how do we align that?
So, Madam Speaker, 2009, we got direction to look at the relationship between the extension of the Young North and the relief line. We, when we did the doctor test, the downtown rapid transit expansion project, 2012, the TTC, 2013, we did Feeling Congested. We've been advancing the environmental approvals through the TPAP process, had that approved largely last year, and now we're coming back with the further alignment work. The implication that we're not, we haven't been doing work on this would not be correct. We have been doing work on this, and we're rapidly trying to do work to accelerate the speed with which we get to 15 to 30% design.
So then just clarifying, both the relief line as well as the Young, Young subway extension, none of them are funded in any stretch of the way for capital, correct?
That's correct.
And so will you be, at, at some point, when, when we're going to talk about funding for capital for the next transit priority, will you be championing the relief line over the Young subway extension?
So, Madam Speaker-
Because you're asking for both right now again.
That was your last question.
We are, we are asking to move forward with both on planning and design. As I indicated previously, I believe we'll have to come back with a report that as a network, we'll look at the priorities, the funding availability, and the relationship between these facilities, so as to fulfill the commitments that we've made to ourselves as council and, and staff, and also to our funding partners, MetroLinks and New York Region.
Thank you.
The simple fact that we had a decision in 2009 to support the Young North extension is one of the reasons we're here today.
Thank you. Counselor Fletcher?
Yes, I'm going to ask a couple of questions to our mayor on this. And Mr. Mayor, about a week ago, I think we were out, maybe a little more, at Carlaw and Gerard, looking across the street at where the relief line station would be, and at that time, you were considering that we may have to say, that's it, we can't do anything more on the Young North, because we have no commitment on the relief line. And subsequent to that, we had a number of key officials come from 905, and I believe, you can, you can corroborate this, said, don't do that, let's join forces and have both of these lines developed at the same time. Is, is that story correct, the way I'm telling it?
Yes, I, I said what I did with respect to the fact, and we've maintained even today that certainly what can't happen is that the Young North extension, which is a project in some respects that is a subject of, even though it's our subway, it's a, it's a project that is discussed provincially between the York mayors and the York Chair and the province, almost, and sometimes it seems like we don't exist. But having said all that, I, I said what I did about that, they, we then had a meeting, and at that meeting, they said, look, we will join in common cause with you to get the, the south relief line funded, as, as long as these two things happen concurrently. And I said, well, we insist they happen concurrently from our perspective, and I thought at the time that it was a better arrangement, rather than us being in conflict with all these other mayors, to have them supporting the funding for the relief line that we have as our top transit priority, that we have identified in a council-approved list as our top transit priority to the federal government, who have stepped forward with money, and that this would help us expedite this funding for the relief line. So as a result, I felt it was better to have them as allies than it was to have them as enemies, as it were. Recognizing, I think, that the political reality, Madam Speaker, is that the two transit projects in the provincial domain will be proceeding in some way related to one another anyway.
Well, they are related to one another.
Well, well, they are, yes, and, and, but I think certainly politically, if I can put it that way, I believe they're very much related in the eyes of the province. Who are the people we're after to get this funding at the moment? They're the missing partner.
For, for both?
Well, yes, but my concern, of course, principally is for the relief line, but I've said that I will certainly say that if these two are on the table for the province, they should be funding them both, but I sure want that relief line that, from Pape Station down, funded pronto.
And so, could you agree that we have some new allies in our request for money? Because when we have been at our press conference noting that we're going to be starting an environmental assessment, but we only, we do not have any committed funding to actually build the relief line once that assessment would be finished?
Madam Speaker, I would say that in answer to that question, we have certainly, because the federal government have allocated billions, and we're going to get confirmation very shortly of that number, to our priority list approved by this council, which is the relief line, the Eglinton East LRT, and the waterfront. We have a, a strong indication of funding from the feds. We have to go back to square one, thanks to the road toll decision, and decide how we're going to finance our share, but the missing partner at the table, without whom I've argued, and I believe correctly, we can't proceed with this, is the province. And so now, we're saying to the province, please step up and fund the building of the relief line, and we now have some allies who are supporting us in that regard, and I think that's very important, given especially that they have their own agenda to pursue, and they're in there all the time talking about this, and I hope they're in talking about our project too, because that's what they said they would do.
Because we've now just put that on the map.
We have, we have indeed.
Now on the map, in a way it wasn't before.
And I would say, Madam Speaker, I've asked the Chair, the CEO of the TTC to look at other ways in which we can help, in the meantime, with relief up the Young Street Line to the north, but in the meantime, this is an urgent project, as you well know, and I appreciate the support of the Counselor, Madam Speaker, coming to the different events, but we've got to move forward with this as part of constant transit building in Toronto, where we don't stop, we keep going, like every other self-respecting city is doing.
Thank you. I have one question about the TPAP, and actually, who will be undertaking that TPAP? And can a construction liaison committee, can traffic management mitigation, and issues around business closures be part of that conversation for the TPAP? Is it the city or the TTC?
It is, it is the city with, in conjunction with the TTC.
Who's leading?
The city, with the TTC.
And is that who normally leads the TPAP?
Yep, that's, that would be our normal process, yes.
Because the TTC led the TPAP on Leslie Street.
Well, this, this is the, this is the preferred
Preferred, yeah.
process that we're using.
Will we have a third party who's assisting with that? Third-party consultant?
Through, through the Speaker, we do have a consultant on board that is, will be helping us with the TPAP process.
A consultant who's been working already on the relief line?
That is correct.
So the terms of reference for that consultant, if, I'll speak to you about my motion then, for later. Thank you very much. Sorry to catch anybody off guard on that question.
Oh, thank you. Yes, I, sorry. Counselor Pasternak?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm not sure who this should be directed to, maybe, maybe the Deputy City Manager, but if I was traveling west on the Young line, and I wanted to go to Young and Bluer, Dundas, Wellesley College, Queens Park, St. Patrick Museum, I would not get off at Pape. Have you done your calculations to see how many westbound travelers on the Bluer line will actually get off at Pape and, and use this $6 billion relief line? Sorry, I'm correct, sorry, $7 billion.
Through the Speaker, as part of our analysis, we looked at a number of different options for where the relief line would connect on the Bluer Danforth line. The two key locations we looked at were Broadview and Pape, and we did determine that, that Pape would in fact be a, a good location for attracting transit riders off the, off the Bluer Danforth line before Young and Bluer.
And Madam Speaker, if I could just reinforce, if I could just reinforce the answer, the traffic modeling has a fine grain of traffic zones, and it has the origin and destination desires of the traveling public, and so yes, it looks at all the different desire lines and where people want to go, and yes, some people would continue to choose to go westbound to Bluer to come down to College, but others that would be able, would be going down to King or Queen or parts of the area south, or over to University Avenue on, right at this location, would be using, would like to be using the, the relief line.
Well, as a, as a regular subway user, I can only tell you that if I were traveling west, and I was going to any one of those stations that I had mentioned, I would not, I would not get off at Pape. Now, with a $7 billion decision before us, I also like to bring up the issue of the connection between Downs Street Station and Young and Shepherd, the North York Relief Line, which is estimated through correspondence at, which I've circulated to all councils, at about two and a half, two and a half billion. How closely did council look at the option of doing a $2.5 billion relief line that will have seven stations above it, seven stations above the Young line, rather than a $6.8 billion downtown relief line, which will have, I believe, four stations below it?
So, Madam Speaker, we have before us a recommendation for the planning and design funding for the relief line south and the business case for relief line north. You do not have before you a decision, principal decision on 6.8 or 7 billion dollars for the relief line, and so then, like, I really don't think the question can be answered in the way that you framed it.
Well, Executive Committee certainly asked staff to report back on that, I hope, I hope to see that in the future. I was asked on the weekend, why don't we just build to Steels and let York Region worry about the rest? Have we considered that option? Why, even if some, if a third party is paying for it, why are we investing our resources in a subway system that is beyond municipal boundaries?
Madam Speaker, first, in 2008, city council approved and recommended pursuing the work for the relief, or for the Young Extension North. In that process, the, the York Region has been indicating that they and the province will be the ones that would be the funders, not, not the cost to the city of Toronto. And so we're holding them to that bargain, and we're expected to continue to work with them, as the mayor and others have indicated, to see that those plans realize, because it has advantages for us and the relief line south and its funding.
Even if the province pays, it ties up TTC talent and resources that can be used in other areas, expanding transit in other parts of the city, what are the implications or consequences? I, I re-asked the question of just building to Steels and saying, we've done our job, the rest is yours?
So Counselor, maybe I'll have a go at that. I think really, it's a, it's a trade-off between the point you're making, which is that, yeah, sure, you could say, well, we won't tie our planners up and our, people who do construction, Susan's team, to build the extension so that they can focus on something else, offset against the fact that it's our line, it needs to be built to the same standards, it needs to be built to our satisfaction, because it's a continuation, it's not an adjunct, it's a continuous piece of subway infrastructure. So I think you'd spend pretty much as much time directing them, helping them, coaching them, assisting them in how to do it properly, you may as well do it yourself, that's certainly my professional view.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Grimes, questions?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My question's for the Deputy City Manager. Mr. Livy, I know you're getting pulled in 45 different directions, I know the priorities are, are great across the city. The waterfront reset was supposed to come back in the second quarter, that's been delayed now. When is that coming back?
Madam Speaker, through you, the waterfront reset's coming back in the fall, for your consideration.
Okay. Now, I know the city manager and the chief planner both acknowledged, Hummer Bay Shores was built out, there was a plan back in the 80s where the three levels of government got together, we built this community out that was approved by this council and by planning. Park Lawn, I'll call it the west side, going up to the QEW, was not in our plan, we lost that to the board, to the OMB, and we have probably 30,000 new residents in that area right now. And the big unknown is the craft plant, Mr. Christie's across the street, 27 acres, that's headed off to the board. Where does this fit, the waterfront reset, in a priority, you know, where does this fit into the plan? What do I tell my residents? Where does this fit into the plan? They've been patiently waiting, where does it fit?
Well, if the, where does this fit, the planning and design for relief line and the Young extension are, are different projects, obviously. The reset, as we said, we're coming back in the fall, the, I think there's been some fairly exciting work done by the staff to look at some options that will help your community. We've also got direction on the Park Lawn Ghost Station, and that presumably gets tied into the first capital proposals that they're contemplating on that Mr. Christie's site. So we'll, we'll tie that together, it'll come back. Again, this is one of these projects we want to advance simultaneously with other projects, so we can make determinations on the appropriate funding for, for those improvements.
Great, also, you know, we, I fought, I won't say with Mr. Byford, prior to Mr. Byford, I fought for an express bus, for buses to come down the peak areas for my residents. Is it time for my residents not to be paying double the fare to bring them down to work in the morning and at home at night? They're paying double the fare for a premium service?
In June, next month, the TTC staff will be bringing a report to the board with recommendations as to how to treat the premium express buses and service and fares. So at that time, I think that question will be answered.
So that'll be in that report?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, those were my questions, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Counselor Audrey Mary?
I have a couple of questions. Firstly, what's the situation now with the Finch West LRT?
Madam Speaker, my recollection is that is in the RFPQ process, MetroLinks has issued that, I don't know the exact status of when that will end, but I think that's later this year, that RFPQ will be completed.
Do we have an anticipated start and/or end date?
I believe 2021 is the in-service, anticipated in-service date?
In-service?
Yes.
Thank you. Next set of questions has to do with the, the extension that is set to open in December of this year. It's correct, isn't it, Mr. Byford, that we will be responsible for all of the operating and maintenance costs, including the subway stations that are in the 905?
That's correct, Counselor.
And how did, how did that occur? Why are we, why, why is the City of Toronto footing the bill for the part of the line and the stations that are out of the City of Toronto?
My understanding, Counselor, was that that was direction of council, but that the equation was based upon, we would, but, the reciprocity would be, we would own that line even though it goes up to York Region. So we, we pay for the operating costs, but we get to own the assets apart from the bus terminal and car parks, we own the stations even though they're in York Region.
So, right now, the subway stations are acting as a cash cow in the, in the 905, in that it's a treasure trove, development applications are coming forward, and there is a lot of development potentials around the new subway stations. We will not garner one cent of that multimillion dollar cash cow.
Well, my understanding is if the, where the stations are within York Region, the associated development around those sites would, would, would benefit York Region, but the more those sites become hubs for, for further development, the greater the ridership, therefore the greater revenue that derives to the TTC. So, and we would still get benefit if those sites were developed, as you suggested.
But your answer premises that we will make money, that this subway will be a money-maker.
No, it, it's saying that the more the development occurs around those stations, as you suggested it might, and we hope it will, that will attract more ridership, people will be going to those as traffic destinations. That's good for us, because the TTC keeps the revenue- to those as traffic destinations, that's good for us, because the TTC keeps the revenue.
The revenue of?
Of more people using, yeah, absolutely, revenue of passengers.
If, if the service proves to be a money maker, many of our service lines are not.
Yeah, sure. And, well, I mean, at the end of the day, more people who use the service, the, obviously the greater the revenue income to the TTC, and, and we should be looking to maximize that, to maximize the return on our investment, joint investment with York Region. So, and I certainly wouldn't be opposed to them developing the areas around the stations, they're already doing that, places like York University.
Yes, and my next question, I guess, is not for Mr. Byford. I'm wondering if there's anything that could be done at this point to alter the, the deal so that we are the recipients of something, anything, from the huge development potential around the stations in the 905, where we are paying 100% of the bill and getting nothing in return?
You'll recall, Madam Speaker, that there was a direction to pursue TIF funding, which would have provided some incremental revenues based on extra densities that developed along the line. We were unable yet to get the province to implement such a scheme, that would be a helpful thing for us, for the provincial government to authorize us through regulation to do a TIF on the line.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Philion?
Just to pick up on where Councillor Ager Mary was going, is there any analysis that would indicate that operating these stations in, north of Steels would be anything other than a money loser?
Not sure we've done that analysis, I mean, the, the more attractive they are, a bit like the way I referred to Commissioner.
The question is, under any scenario, do we not lose money operating these stations?
Well, there's, there is a cost for operating stations, clearly, but, but offset against a really busy station, if it attracts a huge amount of ridership.
That's not what I'm asking about.
Okay, well, the simple answer then, councillor, is, if you're not going to consider what the income draw of that station is, yes, then the, there is a marginal cost to running a station, obviously, because you have to staff it.
What does marginal mean? What is the impact on our current operating budget, which is already strained, of, of taking on the operation of additional stations in the 905?
I'd have to check, do you mean for the York, for York, for the TYSSC or for Young North?
For TTC.
No, 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 which, which are you talking about, TYSSC or Young North?
Young North.
I don't believe we have that yet, do we? No, we do not have that as yet. We can make an assumption, based upon pure math, of the number of stations multiplied by the number of employees required at each of those stations, multiplied by their annual salary, but I don't believe we yet have that.
And how can we be entering into something when we don't have that, when we don't know what it's going to cost us? How can we be saying we want to operate these stations when we have no idea what it's going to cost?
So that's an assumption at the moment, councillor. For us, for us to hand over operation to, say, York Region, when it's an extension of an existing TTC line, is impractical. You couldn't really have two operators on one line, I would not advocate that.
It's not a question.
Councillor Philion, please allow the staff to answer the question.
My time will run out, I'm getting answers that I'm not asking the questions to. So could there be a scenario under which we operate and, but we get a certain payment to fund what we lose in operating those stations?
Well, I guess anything's possible, councillor. In the past, what we have had is transitional relief on extensions to subways from the province, where until the, the operating costs or the, or the, the revenue and the ridership reaches a viable level, we get transitional relief from the province, that's something else that we could still presume.
There's no plans for that now, there's no analysis has been done.
We haven't done that as yet, but we've done it in the past, so that's a useful precedent.
Okay, question to Mr. Livy, I would assume that the Extension North on Young cannot be done without the city's cooperation, would that be correct?
Madam Speaker, that's correct.
So, so we then would have the leverage to require that we have the other projects funded prior to agreeing to that extension, would, would that be correct?
Madam Speaker, yes, in the discussions that we have with York Region, our MOU can reflect the priorities that the city has for funding our projects.
Okay, and I'll ask, be asking the same question of the mayor in a sec, I know he's engaged in a conversation, but I'll ask you first, Mr. Livy, is there anything in this, these recommendations which state that explicitly, that if we don't get funding for the relief line, including the Bluer subway station, that we are not cooperating with the Extension North into York Region? Does it explicitly say that anywhere?
Madam Speaker, we have on the record the council decision of 2008 that said that you had to have the relief line, and you had to have an improvement at Bluer and Young, and other matters that are going to be sufficient for us to move forward. So, ours, ours was a conditional City Council approval, we're simply asking today for the, to advance the planning and design to the 15 to 30%, recognizing we have a previous council approval.
There's no reiteration of that condition in here. So I'll, because I'm going to run out of time, I'll switch to the mayor. Mr. Mayor, is it still, is that still the, your intention, is that we, the funding for the relief line, including improvements to the Bluer station, must be in place prior to our cooperation to extend, or at least concurrently with, but not, but not after?
I think, I think it go, yes, I was going to say, it goes further than that, it isn't just about the funding, but it's actually that we have said that the relief line has to be, I've used the expression, you know, well advanced, and, and we've used other expressions that talk about it being in operation, but I think the bottom line is, we need that relief line there, I'm talking about the one to the south, if I can call it that, at the very least concurrent with any movement to do something on the north, and of course, the funding is one of the fundamental stepping stones in making that happen.
That was your last question, Councillor Philion, thank you. Councillor Kergeianis?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Through you to staff, in order to help me make a decision on how I vote on this, can you please let me know what is happening, the report that you're supposed to be doing along Shepherd, from Don Mills to east, and from Young Street West, along Shepherd Line? There was a report that you were supposed to be coming back on first, the, the early 2017, and we're at that stage, almost going to the middle of 2017.
Through the speaker, that, that report, we will be bringing back at the beginning of 2018, this is the second phase of the official plan review on transportation, and we will be reevaluating the full range of different transit projects, including those identified by council to be added to the list, such as those along Shepherd.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Through you to staff, was the direction from council 2017 or 2018? Please help me remember.
Through the chair, we had suggested in a number of staff reports that we would be coming sooner, but that was not, there was no specific date given to us by council on that, and the report will be coming in 2018.
So the, the council request was not for early 2017? Am I incorrect in that?
Through the chair, that's my understanding, but we will verify that for you.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Councillor Campbell, questions?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My, my first question's on the so-called Young Spadina, Young Subway Extension. Why does it say that there's no cost to the city when our city is devoting planning resources for this? To the Deputy City Manager?
Yeah, we're doing an in-kind piece of work on that exercise, participating in committees, et cetera. So yes, there's a, there is a cost, but the report was framed on the planning and design costs specifically, and that cost is normally, normally assigned to a project team for as a capital item.
So, given, given the, okay, I'm going to ask a question that I, that I tried to make at the TTC the other day, and that is, when will we receive from either the Chief Planning or the Deputy City Manager, a list, again, this follows up on earlier questions, a list again of our city's transit priorities, in, sort of in order of which are the most, most urgent?
So, Madam Speaker, first, Jennifer will be bringing forward an update on her feeling congested and the, and the network in 2018, early in 2018, and I believe that we'll be coming back with a more fulsome, comprehensive report on the various priorities in 2019, early in, 2019, late 18 after the election, so as to assign some funding priorities.
So, so given the long, long list of urgent priorities, and given that the Young Extension into, you know, Thorn Hill is probably low on the list of priorities, could I, is it safe to say that that project may not actually get underway for, for 20 or 30 years or more?
Madam Speaker, I wouldn't speculate on that whatsoever. York Region has it as their priority, obviously, it's not the one that emerges on the top of our priorities, but it's their priority. We have a council position on it already, and we're following through on that through this report.
All right, so, okay, I guess this is for Mr. Pertola, the question is in regard to, this is in regard to west, I'm going to follow up on councillor, pass your next questions. Westbound passengers going toward Bluer, how, do we know how many passengers go southbound at, at Bluer, and how many passengers go southbound at St. George, the westbound passengers?
Through the chair, we will have to look that up for you.
You have those numbers?
Yeah.
We do have, yes, we do have numbers, that was part of our analysis, looking at where we would optimize diversion from.
So if I were to ask, at a later date, if I were to ask, what percentage of Bay-Yung interchain passengers are coming from the east, you would be able to say 15%, 10%, 8% or whatever that number is, you have that number?
Through, through the speaker, yes, we do have that information.
And then, have you looked at the number of Danforth residents that are west of Pape that might go, that might go east of Pape to go down? Do we, I mean, is that, is that a scenario you've looked at?
We, we don't have that at hand, but that is the kind of analysis that would be possible.
So I'm wondering, we're being asked to, to give, you know, this, we're, I think we're, we've spent 4.1 million on this analysis so far, we've allocated 55 million in the 10-year capital plan, I, I mean, this is a fairly significant decision that we're asked to carry on with, this is, this is apparently the number one transit priority. I'm just wondering why some of that detailed analysis is not in the report?
Through the speaker, when we reported on relief line back in July of 2016, we included much more detail in the initial business case about the benefits and the, and the diversion, the relief that this line would be.
More of the business case?
Yes.
Okay. So, of the 55.52 million that has been, that's set aside for the next, in the 10-year capital plan, over what period will that be spent?
Over the next two years, Madam Speaker.
Over the next two years, okay. And, no, I think I had one more, oh, so, last question. And, and I, I don't know why we call this relief, when it really isn't providing leaf, relief for anybody that's, you know, getting on at Finch, or, or those stations north of, north of Bluer that are coming south, and affect, you know, some of the other, you know, councillor Matlow and councillor Robinson's, and councillor Carmichael Greb's residence, because it's really not providing, and councillor Philion, of course, right, he's, he's right in the middle of it, because it really doesn't provide relief for all of those transit riders. So, why have we not looked at perhaps double tracking that line, or, or, or providing, or, or costing out what it would cost to, to add, add a rail line on, along that north-south route?
That was your last question.
Madam Speaker, just one thing, I just want to make sure we understand, you're saying it's not providing relief. What's happening is that the extra capacity that's, because of the diversions, and the, so, you're, you're attracting latent demand, so there's actually some new riders coming into that line because there is some excess. So it's not quite right to say there's no relief. There's still going to be similar levels of congestion, but it is attracting new riders. And, and Susan can answer the question on the double tracking.
At present, the demand that we're looking at is at the northeast and wanting to get down into the downtown core, so at this time, double tracking wouldn't satisfy that demand from the northeast of the city.
Thank you. Yeah, that was your last question. Councillor DiGiorgio?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My question is, Mr. Byford. Mr. Byford, it, one of the things that crosses my mind is that we have the, the Young Line, of course, and then we have the Spadina Line. There's tremendous pressure on the Young Line, is there equal pressure on the Spadina Line, both of them coming downtown?
Councillor, less so. The Spadina side of the U, if you like, is less busy than the Young Line, but, but ridership is growing and will be added to when we open the Spadina Extension up to York Region.
So when do we anticipate the same kind of congestion developing on the Spadina Line?
I'd have to defer to my colleagues on the precise numbers, but it would be sometime, there's, there is a, quite a difference between the two sides, but it is growing on the west side, in other words, the Spadina Line.
So in the context of, excuse me, in the context of an integrated system, and recognizing that sometimes a particular project that might be high on the priority list will have an impact on some of the other required lines, so in that context, what's the benefit of trying to get people to use the Spadina Line somehow, with overland service or even a subway? For example, I'll just throw this out, I know there's been con, talk about connecting the Shepherd Line from Young over to, over to the Allen, just that kind of a connection can, to the, to the point that you can promote people using the Spadina Line as a way of easing congestion on the Young Line, and of course, that's not to say that we eliminate the relief line, because I think the relief line is needed, but in terms of maximizing the, the use of existing lines, why would we not sort of look at projects?
Sure, so councillor, we are, and that's the reason we do the extensive modeling, and the reason why we look at this as a network, so you put in all of the variables, you add in things like fare integration, the impact on, of SmartTrack, the impact of the Spadina Extension, and the impact of various other options that could be built, in order that you look to see on a network perspective, what provides the greatest relief, and what, what provides the greatest use of existing capacity, so that we already do.
Okay, so it's all in the modeling?
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Burnside?
Thank you, through you to staff, I just wanted to confirm, my understanding to the TTC is that the relief we're looking for is to the northeast of the city, which would ultimately mean taking that relief line north of Danforth, correct?
In, in the first, through you, Madam Speaker, in the first phase, we will be getting some relief in the southern portion through the relief line south, but we are working closely with the city and Metrolinks to develop the planning for the relief line north, and it will be the relief line north portion that will provide the relief to the northeast of the city.
Thank you. So, I guess through you to the Deputy City Manager, in a world of scarce funds, would our eggs or our priority, when we approach the provincial government, our energy not be better spent securing those scarce funds for the, for the relief line as it goes, well, up to the Danforth, but north of the Danforth, as opposed to any looking for funds to extend the Young Street Line north into Richmond Hill?
So, Madam Speaker, we're going to some pains not to ask those questions in this report. What we're trying to do is get the planning and design to 15 and 30%, so you have the ability to look at that priority against other priorities in a comprehensive network fashion, and we're not proposing you have to make these trade-offs, those kinds of trade-offs today, but we do believe, given the import of the relief line historically and on an ongoing basis, that you have to have good information, and we think you need 15 to 30% design to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Perutza, questions?
Yeah, thank you, Speaker. I just, I guess to, to Mr. Byford, in following up on a question I, I heard that was asked by Councillor Ager Mary, so, so on the Spadina subway extension north of Steels, it's my understanding that York Region picks up any shortfall in, in operating costs. York Region subsidizes the Spadina Extension from Steels to Highway 7 if it underperforms, correct?
I'd need to check my facts on that, certainly we've discussed a transitional I'd need to check my facts on that. Certainly, we've discussed a transitional arrangement as the ridership builds, but unless Rob can correct me on that, I don't believe that's the case. I, I'm pretty certain that's not the case, councillor. I think the, the, the operating costs accrue only to the TTC, but obviously, we also get the revenue back. They do not get any of that revenue.
Well, no, that, that wasn't my understanding some time ago when I was on the commission, and we were actually dealing with this, and, and if that changed at some point, it would be interesting to find out where. It was my understanding that, that A, York Region pays the capital cost, or their share of the capital cost, to build the subway from Steels to Highway 7, correct?
Councillor, that's correct. They pay 40% of the capital cost. The Toronto pays 60%.
Correct. And it was also my understanding that they, that York Region would pick up a shortfall in what's projected some, some years back, three, four years ago, five years ago, that the shortfall would be in around $9, $10 million, and, and that York Region would pick up that operating shortfall for that, for that section of the line north of Steels on an ongoing basis.
So again, councillor, I don't believe that is correct. Maybe that was the case sometime back, perhaps when you were on commission. I will check that out, and I'll come back to you on that.
That would be, I, I would be very, very interested in that, because that was our understanding back then, and, and if that changed, it would be interesting to see how and where that changed. I guess my other question, and I really don't know who to ask this question of, in practical terms, I, I look at the report that's in front of us. In practical terms, what are we really doing today? What are we, what are we doing with this report here today?
Madam Speaker, in practical terms, we're confirming the car law alignment of the relief line south. We've had an extensive public consultation and investigation, and that's being recommended. We're recommending that we continue to have design work, planning and design work done on the relief line south in parallel with the work that's being done on the Young Extension north. Those are the principal objects of this report.
So, from, from the practical, other than the alignment, from a practical perspective, what, what design work are we really talking about? And how much design work before you get any kind of, you know, funding commitment from the, from the provincial or federal government, given the magnitude of money that we're talking about with respect to this project?
Through the Speaker, over the next two years, we plan to begin with geotechnical investigations, some tunnel design, some preliminary station configuration, and establishing the property requirements, establishing utilities, utility relocations, some initial systems design, and some project management services for all of that. That'll bring us to the 15 to 30% design completion that we're looking for, so that we can refine the schedule and estimates to a Class 3, where we can have more certainty when we bring that back here to council at the end of 18.
And, and again, given the magnitude of this particular project, A, in terms of costs, and B, in terms of, you know, construction challenges, if you will, both from a design perspective as well as actually building it, we're, we're talking a great many years here. Is there, is there a plan to do, to, to, you know, build in the improvements above ground that provide some relief to what is a very, very congested line? And is there any relief in sight for the current users of the, of the Young Street Subway Line?
I'll take that.
Or is that all basically suspended? And as we, as we begin to wrap our minds around, and around this particular project, and given that this might be out there decades in the works, what relief are you planning for the current users? The people that are backing up out of the, sort of the subway platforms today, trying to use the line?
Yep. So a number of things. One, we've introduced the Toronto Rocket trains, which there's now 82. They provide something like 10% extra capacity, because they're walk-through trains with no middle cabs. So that's the first thing. Second thing, progressive rollout of ATC, Automatic Train Control, which is a communications-based train control system that allows you to safely move trains closer together. That will be in situ in phases by the end of 2019. And thirdly, and this is an ongoing thing, successive iterations to the timetable, operating practices that get trains moving more quickly, reduce delays, so it's a package, and they're already underway.
Thank you. Councillor Shiner, questions?
Yes, Madam Speaker. Mr. Byford. I think I recall correctly, at the public meeting at Executive, our friends from York Region believe used the number of 20,000 riders daily that are getting on at the subway system up at Finch. Does that seem reasonable?
Yeah, I think that's correct. Correct me if I'm wrong. No, that's right. My colleague's nodding.
And they said the extension would bring another 10,000 riders on?
Okay, so for ridership numbers, I'm going to ask either Jackie or someone who's got them to hand.
Just, am I close?
That sounds about right, but I'd like to confirm that with city planning colleagues who've got the numbers. Please.
Let me, let me accept that I'm close.
Okay, I think you're close.
I've got 20,010.
Yep.
What's our subsidy per rider right now?
It's around $3 per ride. We, we draw in $2 per ride. Sorry, we, we pull in $2 per ride. It costs around, on average, $3 per ride. So it's around about a dollar subsidy required per rider.
So that's 20,000, rise $20,000 a day?
Yeah. The marginal cost is 20, is, sorry, is $1 per ride, over and above what we pull in on average fare.
So currently, then, we've got 100,000 rides? Well, that's 20,000 down and 20,000 back, right? So that's 40,000 rise a day?
Well, I mean, again, just purely applying the math to the average, the, you, you're correcting your multiplication. It's a $1 delta shortfall per rider.
So that's about $200,000 per week? Or about $10 million in subsidy for those riders annually right now? Do we receive any revenue from York Region towards those costs?
There's some contribution where we run buses north of Steels, but not, we're not anticipating revenue for the operation of the subway.
We run a bus north of Steels. They pay us for that bus going north of Steels.
There's a contract with York Region whereby they pay us.
But the 20,000 people or 40,000 rides a day, the $200,000 a week or 10.4 million dollars a year subsidy is Toronto subsidizing the current ridership?
That's right. The TTC only gets income from fares, 70%, and subsidy, 30%, and that subsidy is uniquely from the city, not the province nor the feds.
So if it's 10.4 now, and they're right that 10,000 more would come on, then we're talking another $5.2 million minimum annual subsidy?
Well, unless, unless something changes in the funding formula, certainly, any subsidy for additional people riding on any extension to the TTC network would fall to the city, unless we can persuade the province to go back to funding which they used to, as you know.
So, the province isn't there. The fact that these regional riders are running, riding the system in Toronto, and keeps the cars off the roads and all the great benefits, what, how can we work out the fact that, and, and deal with it? What's in these reports, or how do we deal with it as we go forward with the extension, to be able to make sure that if you're coming from out of town into the city on an ongoing basis and using the extended subway system, that there is a fair financial contribution made to the upkeep and operation of the system, and the city of Toronto taxpayers don't have to fund that?
Well, again, unless the funding formula changes, and that's not within our gift as TTC or staff, we, we just have to assume that the subsidy would, would require the city to provide that subsidy.
In the agreements as we go forward, can we, or do we have the opportunity to negotiate with York Region before we build the extension? The fact that we want them to contribute and pay their fair share of the cost of riders in York Region coming down?
Madam Speaker, that would be, that would be important to the terms that we negotiate on the capital and operating, which isn't before us, but Councillor Davis did raise that, and I think that that would be a fair thing to insert into this if, if desired by city council.
So a motion to that extent as we go forward would be worthwhile. And then the last question is, if I recall, their subsidy was minuscule for public transit compared to ours. Do you know what the subsidy is, the annual amount that York Region pays towards supporting public transit? And do you know the amount that the city is paying to support public transit?
So the last time I looked, councillor, because it's something kind of dear to my heart, because I'm constantly quoting the TTC as the lowest subsidized transit in North America, notwithstanding what city council gives us. And our subsidy per rider is around 98 cents per ride. Last time I looked, New York Region, believe it or not, was just south of $5 per ride.
But total funding was my question.
That was your last question.
Maybe I misunderstood the question.
It was the total annual funding York Region puts into public transit?
I wouldn't know. I'd have to ask York Region.
Does anyone on our staff recall what they said?
Councillor Shiner, that was your last question.
My question was at the 4:35 minute second mark, and he gave me an answer towards a question I didn't ask.
Then councillor, I'd have to find out. I, I'll ask my CFO if he knows. I actually do not know what York Region spend on public transit. I have no idea.
Thank you. Councillor Fletcher.
Thank you very much, Speaker. I'd just like to take one second and introduce two young men here today from the Riverdale community that are here for councillor for the day, for Ward 30, Nicholas Parsons and Jude LaForte. Welcome to council. And Nicholas's dad works here at the city of Toronto, so I'm sure he'll come down at 12:30 and do a few photos. Come on down.
Thank you.
Councillor Holland.
Great. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Through you to Mr. Byford. So just looking at the timeline, can you just roll out the timeline for me over the next period until this would potentially be installed?
You mean for the relief line?
Entire, entire period.
Sure. So what we are saying is that we have to have the relief line south in situ, built and open and operating by 2031 in order to avoid a situation where Line 1 would not be able to cope.
So for a 14-year period?
That's right, from today.
So from today, we're actually doing planning based on 14 years, looking at the velocity and the change of technology that changes within a year, let alone a 14-year plan?
Well, I mean, transit planning by definition takes a long time. One of the reasons we're in this mess is because we didn't plan effectively, I would say, in the past, for whatever reason. And, and these things do take time in order to do the various elements of planning.
The velocity has changed since, let's say, 30 years ago, where they did nothing, and they didn't implement in or plan for any, any transit whatsoever? But are we still using, actually using a 14-year timeline?
No. Well, I mean, if, if effectively, what we're saying, the timeline is driven by the point at which we're saying we must have the relief line in situ. That's, that, that is what the modeling shows. By 2031, we will not be able to cope at the key interchange of Line 1, namely Young and Blower, if we do not start the work, if we don't have the line in situ by then. So the actual construction element of that timeline is about eight years.
Right. And so during the 14-year period, just looking at the advances in technology and the velocity in which they're coming, what technological changes do you anticipate in the next 14 years, knowing that we don't know the future? And, I mean, myself just working in the ecosystem, knowing that we don't know, but what changes do you anticipate with the driverless vehicle and the sharing economy in the next 14 years?
So, I mean, we, we are keep, as a TTC, we're watching what's happening with developments such as automated vehicles. We're embracing new technologies such as automatic train control, and we are talking to other transit properties to see what are the latest technologies in terms of tunnel boring machines and ways to expedite tunnel construction. So, and we are, we are mindful of developments, and we try to keep abreast of them.
And so in looking at the agreement that Innisfil just recently had with Uber for their entire transit system, are you in any conversation at all with Uber or Lyft to look at ways that we could look at the offsetting? I mean, we've had a decline in the ridership because people are opting into Uber Pool. Are you seeing that, or, or reaching out to Uber to see if that would be an offset, waiting for something to come in 14 years from now?
Well, less so for the 14 years. We just completed a paper to the TTC board, which did look at the implications of transit, of car sharing, sorry, and, and the implications of Uber and Lyft. And, and we are looking to see what possibilities there might be in terms of final mile, final mile options. But it's kind of early days, and, but that was a paper that we submitted to the board the other day.
Right. And are you, are you looking at any stats that are coming out of Uber in terms of where their biggest increase is, like in the suburbs? Or even internally with Uber Pool? Are you, are you watching those stats? Are you getting that information?
And that, I wouldn't say we're far advanced on that, but with, the work's underway. I'm going to ask my head of service planning to comment. She's right behind you.
Through the Chair, we're actually working with the city staff to get data from Uber on those stats. And that will be part of the further work we're doing on microtransit to determine where, if any, in the city of Toronto we should be deploying microtransit.
Right. So for, for the last mile?
Yes.
But also in terms of offsetting, considering we have this pressure that's on the Young Line, are you looking at using theirs, or utilizing, or having any special agreements with their services like Innisfil has done?
We are exploring the entire gambit of what exists out there. We're looking at what San Francisco has done. We're, we're looking at different parts in, 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 in North America to see what has been done and what we can do with either Uber or, or, or the Taxi Association in Toronto. So we're not ruling out anybody at this stage. So that's something that we're currently working on.
Okay. And just final question is, is this line completely driverless?
That, that has not been determined yet. What we can say is that like, it's an extension. The line, the line, are you talking about Young North Extension or Relief Line? Relief Line still to be determined, but we would certainly be mindful of up-to-date technology.
Thank you. We'll research at 2 o'clock.